I mean, just tell him. It makes sense.
We can't do it, okay? He's not going to be happy. I'll let you be the deliverer. Hey, I didn't realize it was in new business.
I have to say tenaciousness is unreal. Wherever you guys land.
Very last thing.
You were asking me about a handicap parking spot. There's an applicant. No, I don't get them. I don't have any. There's the application and there's.
What's this? I gotta give it to her.
Doctor and then we use them.
I think I know what it is. Why is this? That's probably a better question.
Listen, can you give this to her?
These are for you. What is all this, Phil?
No, it doesn't look like it pays.
He said, what time should I come back? Two to three hours? Two to three. I think if we're.
You come back at 12:01.
Nine o'clock.
It's 12:01, Stan.
I'm sorry.
Well, you haven't had.
Well, I mean, listen. Right.
I'm not sure I can take this all looking to.
You got him in the middle of the night. Text. And text him and. No, 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 no. Don't give me, don't give me work. You're the president. You deal with it.
I don't play with my phone during meetings.
That should be safe. Don't be handing work out this way.
I would like to advise all those present that notice of this meeting has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, and that notice was published in the city website. Copies were provided. Bergen Record, Ellis Special, North Star Ledger, Jersey Journal, also placed on the bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall. Written objections, if any, shall be made to the city clerk. Officer Santos, salute the flag.
The flag is to the flag. The United States of America, and civil law and order, which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Fisher.
Yes.
Jabor.
Here.
President Zano.
Present.
Mr. Quintero.
Present.
Mr. Ramos.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
President Doyle.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Farina. I just, we have a little housekeeping, and I wanted to make a statement with regard to the agenda tonight. And council members, I hope you'll indulge me for a sec. On the agenda, the item for second reading, number two, which is B eight eleven, is being carried, pulled, and so will not be acted upon tonight. It's anticipated that some further revisions will be made to it, and it will come back in the future. So if you're here for that, that's, you know, you're, just for your information. You will note, at the last meeting, I pointed out that there are three public portion signup sheets up here on the dais. And there's the, there's one for second readings, which are the ordinances, which are the laws of the city of Hoboken. And we go through all those first, and then there's, which is public comment on ordinances over there. Then there are public comments on resolutions, and it is on any of the, this evening, twenty or so resolutions that are on the agenda. And then there's typically, we do the first readings and then a third public portion. But unless council members object, I have switched the order so that the, the third public portion, which allows you to speak on any topic that you like, it's a true public, open to whatever your comments are, is going to be before the first readings, because there was sentiment that it was desirous to be able to give us feedback on first readings. So we're just flipping the first readings and the public portion at the end. And we are, I'm hoping that we can abide, as I believe the dude says in the movie.
The dude abides.
Uh.
The dude abides.
The dude abides. What, uh, what's, what's the movie? Help me.
Big Lebowski.
Thank you. The Big Lebowski. Anyway, so you abide by, this, these rules are not changing. I'm just making it clear that there are three different public portions. So as I said, number two is off. If you are interested in talking about number two, you can do it in the last public portion, because you can talk about anything you'd like during that, that session. So that being said, Mr. Farina.
Hearing on an ordinance, amending chapter one ninety dash nine entitled Stop Streets Designated to Add Multiway Stop Controls to the Intersection of Bloomfield Street and Thirteenth Street.
Okay, this is B eight ten, and Patricia Waiters has signed up for this. Ms. Waiters, are you?
I don't think she's here.
In attendance?
Nope.
Arthur Neese and Liz Urteco have not indicated which ordinance they're speaking on. If, I think I could probably guess for both of you. Eight one four. Thank you. And Mr. Neese, do you want to tell us? You, you're, you're not speaking yet. You're going to tell me, do you, are you interested in speaking on B eight ten, which is a multiway crossing signal?
I wish it would be resolution, sorry. Question.
Of resolutions. So then you would, I'm going to cross your name off here and sign up on the resolution sheet?
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's fine. Okay, so Ms. Waiters is not here.
Motion to close public portion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Council President.
Yes.
Can I speak on it?
Yes, you may, councilwoman.
So this is for everyone's benefit. Both Bloomfield and Park Avenue are main northbound streets, and Thirteenth Street, the cars just, we've been asking to get stop signs going north at these intersections for a number of years. The, the cars just go as fast as they can to get to the light at Fourteenth Street, and it's just created a lot of, just a dangerous situation at both the intersection of Park and Thirteenth and Park, or in Bloomfield and Thirteenth. So I just want to thank Greg Franchiase and Director Weber for finally getting this through and getting the, the approvals for these. They're super important, not only for second ward residents, but really for everyone at these, what are pretty dangerous intersections. So thank you. And Jerry, I was supposed to be the co-sponsor in this. Can you just make sure my name's added? Thanks. I hope everyone supports it.
Thank you, councilwoman. Anyone else like to speak?
Nope.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance vacating a portion of Monroe Street right of way.
No members of the public are signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council members, Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Present.
Present.
Okay, got it. Mrs. Jabor.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance of section one forty-one A dash three of the Hoboken Municipal Code, temporary permits to remove the requirement for certified letter from the dean of students as proof of residence, uh, registration.
Uh, no members of the public are signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farina, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen.
Aye.
Fisher.
Yes.
Jabor.
Yes.
Mr. President Zano.
Aye.
Mr. Quintero.
Aye.
Mr. Ramos.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
President Doyle.
Aye.
Hearing on an ordinance of Hoboken City Code, section one ninety-six dash thirty-one point one, cannabis to clarify the application for the six hundred foot rule. Eight thirteen.
Yep.
Eight fourteen.
This is Enrique Herrera.
Well, I guess this is just a continuation of the last meeting where my whole focal point about the dispensary situation is keep the dispensary open and legal activity in, illegal activity out. The more dispensaries we have, the less drug dealers we have. And it's pretty simple. I believe in this amendment rule, and hopefully it's grandfathered. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Liz Urteco.
Um, this ordinance is not about whether you like Blue Violets as a business, whether they are good neighbors, or you feel sympathy because the planning board approval is being legally challenged. This is a change in a law after the fact to benefit a single business. It's no different than rewriting the rules for a clothing store or a restaurant just because you like the owner, or they donated to your campaign. Residents and businesses deem to know they can trust their government and that the laws apply equally to everyone. Good policy, good governance, and strong leadership means voting no on this ordinance. You also have to step back and ask, why is this happening now? Just a few months ago, this ordinance failed. One reason is that the New Jersey Supreme Court has decided to hear this case, an extraordinary step. Out of hundreds of appeals each year, only a handful are accepted. That's how significant this case is. It's not every day the city of Hoboken is in front of the Supreme Court. And I suspect our mayor, facing yet another major legal defeat, is trying to subvert the courts by changing the law to bail out this one business. And I'd be remiss not to point out that we are in the middle of an election season. Mayoral and city council candidates are jockeying for position, angling for votes, or seeking to damage their opponents. I want to believe that our elected officials will put good policy ahead of politics and integrity ahead of political ambition. But in the heat of a campaign, those lines often blur. Meanwhile, Hoboken is dealing with daily water main breaks, rising public safety concerns, affordability issues, and a runaway budget. Yet, instead of focusing on these pressing issues, your priority is getting a dispensary closer to kids and schools. That is out of touch with what the residents really need, and it's why Hoboken deserves new leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Urteco. Roberto, I'm sorry, I don't even want to.
Not the first time somebody stumbles over my list.
I stopped rather than to do it wrong, okay?
Yeah, that's okay. So last time, the, the thing was in front of the council, a couple, at least one, maybe two of the council people justified their, their opinion on the basis of ninety thousand dollars of taxes paid to the city of Hoboken. And in this day and age that we have artificial intelligence scraping, they, the statement is in the, if you ask ChatGPT, as a statement of truth. Since I couldn't actually verify those numbers, certainly it, it says ninety thousand for a licensing, which doesn't seem to be correct, or ninety thousand for sales taxes, which also doesn't seem to be correct. I was hoping that maybe you can clarify, how much is Blue Violets bringing in taxes so that the record, and maybe ChatGPT and everybody else who looks at that as the arbiter of truth, or the, you know, because the more you repeat things that aren't true, they're going to be scraped into these AI engines, and people are going to believe it's true. So can you actually reconcile those numbers, especially since you use them as a background or as a reason for accepting this change? Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Mr. Mr. Dunn, did you, I don't know if you signed up for, to talk about the cannabis dispensary ordinance, or I, no, I know that, but I thought that Mr. Dunn had, I'm not, I'm not asking you to speak. I just wanted to make sure if you signed up in the, in the right place.
I didn't sign up.
Oh.
To speak.
Okay, all right. I apologize. I'm not putting you on the spot. I, I misheard. I thought you had said that you were, okay.
You already heard my opinions on dispensaries, but we don't need.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Lauren Thompson.
Good evening, council. Lauren J. Chang Thompson, six twenty-eight Washington Street. Again, good evening. I don't have much more to add to what I've already set up here two weeks ago and at every other meeting we've attended these last few years. I have nothing else to add to all the messages you've received from all of your neighbors and your constituents about this situation, and how ridiculous it has been. There's nothing I can say that's more powerful than reality, that we've been operating for nearly a year and a half without a single issue. Thank you for your vote of support in the first reading, and I hope to continue, and I hope that you continue to support this ordinance tonight, and finally fix the mess that I am in, as well as Village. Again, I want to remind everybody, just because Village was not sued, does not negate the fact that they are also within six hundred feet of the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other members of the public signed up to speak.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council members.
Council President.
Councilman Cohen.
Uh, thank you, Council President. First, there had been some confusion that I'd heard from some council members about what the impact of passing this ordinance is, and whether it would mean that any dispensary that's within six hundred feet of a school would be forever permissible. That is not the case. It just applies, and I'll just read the sentence, "Any dispensary that applied to the cannabis review board prior to the effective date of the amendment, which is April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, setting forth the six hundred foot distance from schools in adjacency to early childhood learning facilities requirement, shall be exempt from that requirement." So it just applies to the dispensaries that applied when it was legal to apply there. And, and when they leave that facility, no other dispensary will be able to go there, because they would not get the benefit of the application that was done. So that was the first point that I wanted to make. There was a question about funds that were spent. One of the, one of the numbers that I've mentioned at the last council meeting, when we had some discussion about this, was the fact that Blue Violet's dispensaries spent, and this is, and I'm reading from page twenty-eight of the appellate division decision that's been referenced, which unanimously reversed the decision of the Superior Court and affirmed the planning board's unanimous approval and permitted them to operate there. That Blue Violet spent sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to complete the CRB application, the one that we're saying that if you went to the trouble to have a complete application, and they spent almost seventy thousand dollars just to get into the CRB, that they are entitled to rely on that approval and that process, and time of application rule applies. That's what the appellate division found. At our last council meeting, after I spoke, Councilwoman Fisher spoke, and she referred to the fact that one of the reasons why she couldn't support our resolution that was in support of the four existing dispensaries as ongoing operations, or vote yes on this first ordinance, was that she had been somehow misled or deceived by Councilman Russo. She did not understand that there was this limitation. And I didn't speak after her, but, you know, I, I wanted to address that with my colleagues In August of two thousand twenty-two, Councilman Fisher got a text from the mayor of Jersey City, and he asked her about what the rules were for the maps in Hoboken. And I wanted to share this with my council colleagues. And, and Councilwoman Fisher often says how she's the hardest working council person up here, and how familiar she is with the laws, and this is in fact a law that she wrote. And Councilman, and Mayor Philip asked her the question, do you have a map for where marijuana is going to be allowed in Hoboken, like distance from schools or daycares? And the response that he got, and, and the reason we have this is not because of an Oprah request or anything like that. This is from paragraph one hundred and eighty-two of the lawsuit that was filed by the story dispensary, against story dispensary by the condo association where it was purchased. They had claimed that they had been tricked into selling the unit to a dispensary when they thought they were selling it to a physical therapy location, and they sued and said they were defrauded by taking their million dollars from the buyer of that property, and now they've been tricked. And so the question came from Mayor Philip, whose wife, Jacqueline Philip, was a defendant in that case. And so that, so this is proudly published. Councilwoman Fisher shared her text messages with the folks who were suing, and Mayor Philip asked the question, do you have a map for where marijuana is going to be allowed in Hoboken, like distance from schools or daycares? The answer from Councilwoman Fisher was right on the money. Not sure, but I can check. Right now, it's by zone, so not in any residential zones, commercial and industrial only. But I don't recall offhand if there are any further distance from provisions. That's because there were no distance from provisions. She knew it. She wasn't tricked. I mean, when people realize that they make mistakes, they take accountability and don't blame others for their actions. Here, we have a situation where we have a councilwoman who knew exactly what the law was. She told the mayor of Jersey City, who she would not go off on. They relied on this text to prove how clear the rules were, and then said they were, that somehow this was improper. So I just want to make very clear that nobody was tricked here, nobody was fooled here. We worked for years as a council to determine what the rules are, and Blue Violets and Village relied on those rules when they applied to get their approvals. Blue Violet spent almost seventy thousand dollars just to get in front of the cannabis review board and got those approvals. So I, I, I recognize that there was a lot of fear mongering, there was a lot of fear, there was a lot of concern about these dispensaries when they came around, and politicians seized on that fear and monopolized it, and citizens paid for private lawsuits to torture these businesses into submission. I admire the fact that they've stuck with it. They've had thousands and thousands of transactions, they've paid thousands and thousands of dollars to the city. We hear a lot, I, I believe that Miz Urtecho criticized the city for not focusing on the financial issues, but on focusing on this one. Well, guess what? This is a financial issue. Two percent of every sale from these dispensaries goes right to the city's coffers. So here we have people who are zealots for the cause of banning dispensaries, who are willing to cut off the nose of the city's finances despite the faze, because they're so committed to this cause. I want to thank my council colleagues for approving this on first reading. I think, I, I would love to see this pass unanimously on second reading. We did pass a, a resolution for our support of the four existing dispensaries. We support our local businesses. We want them to succeed. We created this industry because we wanted a safe, regulated industry here in our city. We have it. You, people were telling me, when you walk past a dispensary, you don't even know that it's there. And two years ago, all we heard, three years ago, all we heard was that there were going to be people from outside our community lining up, that there was going to be, someone told me there's going to be machine guns coming, the, the parade of horribles that was presented. And even tonight, you know, are you with the industry? Are you with the kids? This, this is, this is what we're hearing, even to this day. People just can't accept reality, which is that they are good neighbors, there are no complaints. Councilman Russo contacted the police department and told all of us, for those of you who aren't here, that there was not a single complaint, except for a false alarm that went off in one business, that the police had to go and check out and say it was a false alarm, that the alarm got triggered. That's the only complaint that's been made to the city. So let's accept reality, let's recognize the fact that this is, that, that these two businesses, Village Dispensary and Blue Violets, are within the six hundred foot rule, and they are there because they were permitted to be there when we passed it. It's a simple fix, but it means a lot to these two businesses. Let's stop the harassment, let's stop the pressure, let's stop ratcheting up the threats on these businesses, let's let them operate in peace. Thank you, Council President.
You're going to let me respond first, right?
You want to be next?
Yes.
Okay. Well, keep in mind that, you know, we don't all get two bites at the apple.
There's no two bites. I don't care. Unless, unless Joe's gonna, unless Joe's gonna pile on with more lies, then I will get a second bite at the apple. So.
How did you drag into this?
No, not you. I didn't say you. No, I said Joe. He was ready to go. So, um, so there's a phrase that I'm known to use very specifically about Timbala, which is comfortably dishonest. And literally what you just heard from Phil is what Councilman Cohen, what he always does, which is completes issues and just make shit up. So the, the, the reference here, this is very specifically a text message that the mayor of Jersey City sent me, and he sent it to me about five days before our second reading of the ordinance that I referenced two weeks ago, where I said, none of my colleagues paid attention to that ordinance.
Except me.
Except Jim. I did say except now Council President Doyle, because I asked him. And in, in that, what did you say?
I was teasing Jim. I said, I could have my name.
Yeah, so, so in that ordinance, in that ordinance, there were, so prior to that ordinance, the only ordinance we had on our books, the only ordinance was our medicinal dispensary ordinance. So on the date of this, the only ordinance was the medicinal ordinance that had been on our books for three years, and when I was asked by Mayor Philip if there was any relationship between medicinal dispensaries and schools, I didn't know the answer. That's all I said here. But that was the only ordinance on our book. We were about to opt in, vote to opt in to the recreational ordinance. We had seen a couple earlier drafts that happened in like April, May, and then they were withheld and changed, and they were given to us in August with a gun to our head, last minute, had to get it done. And when we got the ordinance, there were two provisions that were changed. One of them is, they added a commercial district, C three, which I, which everyone knows is where story is. It is, everyone knows that it was something that we all missed, and as I mentioned, Councilman DeFusco, Councilman Ramos, Councilman Giattino, and myself all admitted that we missed it, because not only was it where story is, but it was in front of the housing authority, which Councilman Ramos was concerned, C three, and it was on First Street, which Councilman DeFusco was concerned. So there was concerns about it. We all missed it. But the other provision that was in there, this is what I mentioned two weeks ago, that Councilman Russo put in that none of us saw, because none of us read it, was.
Except me.
Except Jim.
And me.
And, well, you wrote it. So the. So the was, they eliminated the cap. So remember, as of the date that Councilman Cohen gave this, the only ordinance that we had on our book was our medicinal cannabis. It was three years old. We had a cap of three dispensaries. We went from three dispensaries, and in every version of the ordinance that Councilman Russo put up, leading into August, that wasn't changed. But in August, that changed from three to unlimited. Unlimited. So we had an unlimited, the only restriction was it couldn't, there were certain districts it was going to be in. It couldn't be on the same, and there actually was restrictions relative to schools, couldn't be on the same block, the same block facing of a school. But the unlimited portion that four of us admitted we didn't see, you can ask Councilman Cohen if he was okay with unlimited. You can ask Councilwoman Jabour if she was okay with unlimited. Councilman Quintero was not, you were not on the council. He was not on, you were not on the council.
Yes, I was.
Oh, you was. So you can ask, you can ask Councilman Quintero if he was okay with unlimited. But that, that's all this was, right? So you just heard Councilman Cohen, right in front of all of you, and for everyone to hear, make his big campaign speech about what a terrible person I am because I want our laws to be followed. That's it. I just want our laws to be followed. But yet, he just decided he'd make up a story and make up a lie. So just walk out of this room knowing that that's who he is, okay? I will always be accountable for everything I missed and everything I supported, everything I denied. And you can, you can call me out on any one of my, any one of my decisions. I am not opposed to cannabis, not at all. I smoked a ton of pot in high school and college. I'm perfectly fine with cannabis gummies. I haven't had gummies, but I am perfectly fine with it. Let's be very clear. I supported every one of our dispensaries, except the one that I believe, different than everyone else, I believe, didn't, it wasn't even the dispensary. It's not that I didn't support the dispensary. I didn't support a process that seemingly didn't follow our local laws. And that's just who I am. I want to see our local laws followed. There's, it's an unfortunate situation. It is before the Supreme Court. I personally would not change a law to benefit one business, right? Because that is what they're going to do. So just think about that. Half of them are running for mayor. Just think about what that means going forward to have your representatives change the law for one business, one friend, one, anything that they like. That's all this is. I will tell you one other thing. My concern, right? This is a permanent, the state law is determining whether or not, the result of the state law or the Supreme Court decision is if the planning board did not follow the law, they're either going to agree with the lower courts, which said the planning board did not follow the law, or they're going to agree with the appellate court, which said they did follow the law. It's that simple. If they say that it did follow the law, permanently, there will be a cannabis, a cannabis, or approval for cannabis directly across from kitty corner from a school. I'm not okay with that. That's just me. Other people are. I'm not. If it sides with the lower courts, the superior courts, then cannabis won't be kitty corner, ever be kitty corner from a school. Because if it's approved, and they basically say that the planning board was okay, then the planning board has given approval for cannabis use kitty corner from a school. And that was something that I wasn't okay with, but, but the reason why we're here is because we believe the planning board didn't follow the law. That's it. So I have nothing more to say. All I would say is just keep an eye on what you hear from people on this dais, and don't believe everything you hear, especially when it comes from Councilman Cohen, and he, like, whatever, makes these stories up. Because it's, it's, the fact that he wants to attack my credibility, if you want to attack my credibility with truths, have at it all day long. You want to make up lies, which is what Timbala does, you want to make up lies and attack people's credibility, that is not acceptable. It is toxic politics, and it's not acceptable. Sorry. So I'm a no.
Councilman Quintero?
Thank you, and thank you to Councilman Ramos for letting me borrow his pen real quick. Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman Fisher. Don't believe everything you hear on this dais, especially 90% of what just heard. You know, one, first of all, Councilman Cohen is one of the most stand-up people I've ever met in my entire life. You can trust Councilman Cohen. He will always tell it to you straight. He will tell you the uncomfortable truth when, when you don't want to hear it. So, so if you're going to smear somebody, pick somebody else, because then you're going to have a problem with me. Second, we hear a lot about, all right, let's talk about what we're actually here for. And, and, and really, this is about honoring time of application rule. At the time that we changed the law, right, there was a lot of statements about changing the law. Yeah, we did change the law out from, under somebody's feet, two applicants in particular, okay? Village and Blue Violets, right? Both of them were and still are, because of physics, within 600 feet of a school. So we, we changed the law as a, what? All right, sorry. There you go. Physics. Now physics, they can't physically move, anyway. We changed the rule because there was some public backlash, some, as I mentioned last time, reefer badness against the story dispensary frankly. And the reason why we chose six was because there was already six with the, had been gone through the CRB rule. That's why we chose six, because we didn't want to pull the rug out from other those folks. 600 feet, some of us are saying, you know what? This is perspective. I said it in my comments at the time. So we are correcting that. If this passes, and these two places are protected, right, Village and Blue Violets, and if for some reason either of them don't make it, right, they do wrong by their customers and they go somewhere else, and they close, the next businesses that go into there can't be cannabis businesses because these rules will, will be in effect right now.
Not true.
It is true. And I'll revert back to my earlier comments of not to believe everything you hear on this dais. So that's what we're doing. We're grandfathering in time of application. The Supreme Court, you know, can, it is before them, and they can decide a number of different ways. There are two kind of main outcomes, but there's other things that could actually come out of that. But what do I know? I only went to law school. So, you know, let's understand what we're actually, you know, have in front of us. It's kind of that, that rule. But those are the facts of that. Now let's talk about a lot of the commentary and political speech up here. You know, one of the things that I hear time and time again is, you know, what I'm here, what I'm going to dub is, you know, statements coming out of the Tiffany Fisher School of Projection, where some of those isms are comfortably dishonest. Yeah, they're comfortably dishonest, and then goes on to say some things that are marginal at best, dancing around the issue, saying the thing without saying it, and making it political. We had one of her disciples up here before, who's a running mate, making it political, thinking that if I say I'm not making it political, or they're making it political, and then goes on to make a political speech, we're not going to blatantly understand that they're making it political. You want to honor the laws? That's what we're trying to do here. If you wanted to honor the laws, why didn't you sue two of the businesses? Why did you just pick one? Why didn't, why, why aren't we petitioning to change the Constitution or whatever so that you can go backtrack and sue Village? You're not. So let's face facts. You just didn't like this one. You got caught with your pants down, and you're trying to backtrack and losing every, using every lever to milk these guys dry so you can be proven right and after the fact. Let's let the legislators legislate. We had attempted to do the right thing and have this be perspective years ago. It's been misinterpreted. The appellate court agrees with us unanimously. Let's just move on. We've got bigger things to worry about in Hoboken. We've got folks here that we're in a community meeting with who are really passionate about something that's going to directly affect them in a substantive way if it goes forward. Let's get through this so we can talk about those issues. Let's stop with this nonsense and move on. We're better than this. I hope everybody joins me. Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Russo.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to say thank you, Councilman. I appreciate what you said here tonight. For years, there have been people who always tried to vilify others because of their own decisions, and I think you clearly stated exactly what the facts were. And I'm not going to get into the political stuff, but I am going to speak to the facts. The facts are that if someone disagrees with a policy, regardless, and whether it's this or something else, 90% of the times, they'll come up and they'll speak about, "This isn't good policy," because it's not the policy that that person would want. So therefore, it can never be good policy. That's a fact that happens in the city of Hoboken constantly, and well beyond, I'm sure. Another fact is that this city council voted unanimously for the original legislation to approve cannabis dispensaries in the city of Hoboken. Now, if certain councilpersons didn't do their job and read that law before they voted on it, not once, but twice, that's no one's fault but their own. Please don't ever try to put that on someone else. If you sit at this dais, and you want to say, "I was duped because one of my colleagues pulled the wool over my eyes," that means you're not doing your job. That means you're not reading the actual laws you're voting on. Again, not once, but twice. The other point, and the other fact is, I absolutely agree with the statement that we should not change our laws for one business, or one person, or one property. But that is exactly what we did when we changed the law from its original ordinance to what was dubbed, what was it, Jim? The common sense, the...
Yeah, the common sense ordinance.
Common sense ordinance. Common sense changed cannabis.
Common sense cannabis ordinance.
Exactly what we did when we voted on that. We changed the law because of one dispensary. That's what we did. Those are facts. Has nothing to do with the politics. Has nothing to do with what your positions are. But that's what we did. So you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth. You can't put blame on someone else because you didn't read what you should have read, and you voted in, in favor of something that you wanted to now backtrack and say, "Oop, I made a mistake." And that's fine. If you make the mistake, own up to it and move on from that. But to try to put it on someone else because you didn't do it, that's just crazy to me. So I'll leave it there. I'm 100% supportive of this, as I have been from the beginning. I will continue to be, and I can't wait until my colleagues hopefully pass this tonight.
Councilman Ramos?
I'm ready to vote, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought you indicated, are you...
I was in on the council one a lot of times. Just clarify, I don't fall under any of this.
Okay.
I'll answer. There was one question a member of the public had asked, and I'll just, we talked about it at the last meeting, but I think a couple of the council members mentioned that they basically, the question to the member of the public was, "Why are we voting for this again now if we'd voted on it before several months ago and it failed?" I believe the conversation in the last meeting was that some of the council members decided that this was, they were reassessing their position on this issue, and thus, that is how this happened. And that was communicated to several members, other members of the council, and that's why this came forward. So just wanted to answer that one question, but happy to support.
Just a very quick thing.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Also, this ordinance references the appellate division decision, which happened since that last vote. So, and, and Councilman Ramos mentioned in our last meeting that he was persuaded by the rationale of the appellate division. Thank you.
Well, I could speak to that, then. Don't speak for me, Phil, but...
I'm sorry.
It's not to jump in yet. So I was, changed my position based on the appellate court decision, and also based on, like, the reality of the boots on the ground in this situation. It's, it was a vacant storefront for over five years. Here we have a small storefront. Village, also a small storefront. You walk by it, you don't even know what it's there. You don't know what type of business that is. So the situation on the ground is what persuaded me to change my decision, as well as what the judge is writing in the courts as well. We want to support our small businesses the best we can, because other small businesses may want to invest in our city, may look at our position on this. And I want them to look at a position that the city council, the governor of Hoboken, the government of Hoboken wants businesses and supports us small businesses in our city. So that's why I reevaluated my position prior, to support a business that's working, has had no issues, both businesses have had no issues whatsoever, and that's how I'm in a position to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll be brief. I just feel compelled to defend the planning board. It was said that the planning board didn't follow the law, which is misleading. The planning board, it was a case of first impression. It had never been adjudicated, it is not written in state law. So the planning board was left with the question of whether the CRB is a land use board, and if it is, the time of application rule applies to the application to the CRB. If it is not a land use board, then the application to the planning board, which comes after the Cannabis Review Board, is the time of application. So there, the attorney for the planning board opined that he felt that because the Cannabis Review Board was a necessary prerequisite to be able to apply to the planning board. You can't apply to the planning board unless you get the approval of the CRB. Logically, that was the beginning of the process. With that opinion, which was a case of first impression, nobody, it wasn't wrong, it was an interpretation. And the planning board took that advice from its lawyer, and the lower court said, "You were wrong, planning board." The, it, in your vote, it shouldn't have been CRB, it should have been at your application. And then the higher court said, "No, it turns out you were right, planning board." So the, maybe I'm being too defensive, I surf on the planning board, but it did not fail to follow the law. And what I just alluded to, that date, that which, it only makes sense that if you, if you apply for something, and then, in the, in the old days, 15 years ago, it was the time of decision. So if you applied to the zoning board for something, the, the city government, town government could change the law underneath you while you were having an application, and then they could say, "We deny it because we don't like what you're doing." And the state legislature, in its wisdom, said, "That's not fair. We got to lock it in." I think it's important that this decision will, this Supreme Court decision will make a decision for the entire state of New Jersey, not just little old Hoboken. And so I am, I have been awaiting the decision of the court, rather than the, us, you know, at one point, there was talk of us passing a law that said the Cannabis Review Board is the board when the time of application applies. And I was against that because state law trumps local law. But I am content, and I appreciate the fact that this law, this change is essentially changing 600 to not 600 in one specific instance. And that is something that is the purview of this body, not state law, but it just doesn't sit right with me that the, the change, as Councilman Quintero points out, the change seems to be directed at helping one specific entity. So I'm not going to support it, as I have not supported this and the prior effort in this regard. But, and I don't need to, to be like Councilwoman Fisher and tell you how much pot I smoked in high school, because I didn't smoke any. But anyway, Mr. Freena, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
President Dano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
Okay. Hearing on an ordinance amending Hoboken City Code, Chapter 168, Article 8, opening permits to ensure proper engineering controls for designated restricted areas as per the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
No members of the public, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Patricia Waiters? Patricia Waiters, did you?
She's here.
You had signed up for eight?
Excuse me for being late, I signed up for all of them.
Well, we already passed all but one. So you are signed up for this one, which is the road opening permits to ensure proper engineering controls.
Six, right?
Number, number six, yes.
All right, so number five, y'all just voted?
We just voted on number five.
That passed.
And that passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to close?
Second.
All of us in favor of closing?
Aye.
Motion second.
Mr. Freena, please call the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
Mr. President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Freena, we're moving on. Jerry, do you take that?
Thanks, Bill.
I was gonna say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go through any, all right, so we're on to public comments on the resolutions. And I have the sign up sheet, and again, Patricia Waiters. Patricia, are you still here?
She's back.
Okay.
Oh, she's back.
Yep. All right, Patricia, make you run around. This is on resolutions. You signed up for no specific one, but you can speak on the resolutions.
All right. Can you let somebody go in front of me? I'm really running crazy today. I had an emergency, so I just don't want to be skipped and overlooked. I have two serious topics, the park, the park.
You're number eight, so we'll go through the other seven, and if you're here, or you're asking to just come back up in a moment?
Yes, please, I respect, please.
But if we finish them, we're done.
I'll try to be back, two seconds, please. My food is.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll be back in like.
Yeah, you can go back, and you can always speak in the public portion at the very end if you missed that, okay? And Anthony Romano is not here at this moment, but he may be back.
President Doyle, can I just, there's public portion in its normal spot, correct? I'm confused, because this.
This is public portion on resolutions. We will go through all, that's all there is. And then when we're done with the resolutions, there'll be another public portion for whatever anybody would like to discuss.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
Okay. Armando Luis.
It's freezing cold in here.
Did I pronounce that carefully or correctly?
I signed the wrong sheet. I meant to sign for the public comments at the end, which I did.
Okay, great. So I will, thank you. Andrew Wilson? Yeah, this is.
Resolutions.
I know it's resolutions, thank you, Councilman. People have signed up for the new business resolutions, which I guess we're going to be dealing with that.
Separately.
How about it? It'll, it's gonna be a little while before we vote on it.
Thanks for coming, Andrew, go ahead. Okay, I'm good.
But Andrew, we are all ears.
Excellent, all right. My name's Andrew Wilson, I'm Executive Director of Bike Hoboken, I'm also a Hoboken resident. I'm here to speak on the emergency resolution, which I see, asks to do an injunction against the automated enforcement of traffic violations. So in May of last year, this council, by a vote of eight to one, took an important step by approving the clear automotive system to automate enforcement of existing laws that are known to create dangerous conditions and congestion along Washington Street. I want to be extremely clear on what we're talking about here. We're talking about a program that doesn't suddenly make it illegal to double park or block bus stops. It simply helps with the enforcement of laws that have been on the books for decades, something that everyone in this room should support. As a frequent cyclist and transit rider, I want to thank this body for approving this. Phase one results from this program confirm what many Hoboken residents already know. Each camera recorded, on average, 68 bike lane violations and 158 bus stop violations per day. These violations are not harmless. They create unsafe boarding conditions for riders, they delay buses, they force cyclists into traffic. They also create gridlock, block sightlines, and make Washington Street more chaotic for drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians, which is bad for businesses that depend on customers feeling safe. Public sentiment is overwhelmingly supportive of this plan. Survey results show that people want bike lanes and bus stops cut clear. Clear lanes and loading zones mean that the 126 bus stays on schedule, that cyclists use the bus lanes, use the bike lanes, and that drivers can find parking spots more easily. This is all good for businesses. It increases turnover, keeps loading zones open for quick stops and deliveries, and makes the street feel more welcoming for everyone. Our neighbors in Fort Lee already use the system for parking and enforcement, and on streets where they use it, they've seen a 53% increase in turnover. That is really good for business. When you approved the contract last May, you recognized that this approach has already been successful elsewhere. Pittsburgh and Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, for example, have reported a 74% decrease in double parking, a 40% drop in congestion, and a 10% reduction in carbon emissions since implementing this technology. These results make the street calmer, safer, and more welcoming, conditions that yet again encourage more people to spend time and money. Finally, I want to address the comment, I want to address concerns that the public or this council were not properly informed about this program. This is a memo sent to the council in April 2024 from Director Sharp. I found this memo on the city council website as an attachment to the funding resolution for this plan. It clearly outlines the scope of the system, including colorful maps, locations, and exactly how the enforcement would work. This process has been transparent from the very start. Perhaps people in the administration, perhaps people in the administration, and perhaps members of this body could have done more to signal this change earlier for their constituents, but the idea that the general public didn't have access to this information is simply a false narrative. I urge you to stay the course unclear. It's working elsewhere, it's very popular here, and it will make Washington Street a safer and more welcoming place for residents, businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I want to talk about the redevelopment agreement that's going to be signed with Adams Investor, 1417 Adams Street. I think these redevelopment agreements are such an opportunity for the city to protect renters. We put so many conditions in these agreements, we say, you must build so many parking spaces, or we say, you must, for example, have units that are one bedroom or three bedroom. What we can also do in these agreements, it puts some language in place as guardrails for rent increases. We know what happens with these luxury developers. They build something, they want to fill it with renters right away, they may price the rent pretty low, and within a year, increase the rent or add other expenses for the renter. In this agreement, if you want today, you can put an amendment in that will protect the renters. The other thing I wanted to point out is the water main break that just happened because of construction close to St. Enns. In this agreement, I don't see any language that protects the city from the expenses resulting from a water main break that was a result of a contractor's mistake. This is your opportunity to make sure that if the developer and their contractor makes a mistake, and we have a massive water main break, that the city is protected from the expenses of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ashmani. Roberto?
I just realized I actually put the wrong, I want to speak on CD4.
That's fine.
Okay, so this is something, I guess it's been going on for about 10 years, but yeah, I guess if it passes now, it'll be done, or who knows? I have gone through a little bit of the two agreements. First of all, I want clarification, because at the end of the day, you know, it states what the original agreements were, but it doesn't actually in the agreement state what the new agreements are, and what the new parking will be, how many parking. The only thing I could see is that for the TDR, there will be no more parking, which, and, you know, except, you know, and the tax payments. So over the last few months, we've been hearing from a bunch of people on these dais, how they are going to deal with taxes and, you know, and how they have to make the city be more balanced budget, et cetera, et cetera. This will bring a huge amount of apartments, which will bring a huge amount of people that will require, you know, services, but not any, in comparison, the amount of taxes that will be collected proportionately will be less. So unless I'm missing something, all of us who are currently taxpayers will have to pay a little bit more to compensate because of that. The other thing I wanted to ask, in the agreement, it does say in clause 14.5, that the redevenir warrants and covenancy has not paid or incurred any obligation to pay any officer or official of the city any money or other consideration. Now, at least one of the owners of the redeverber, Mark Bijamar, has made payments to two of the mayoral campaign, mayor to be, let's put it that way. And shouldn't they be precluded from voting on something where they have, you know, at least on my view, an appearance of bias, let's put it this way? So if that's the case, they also, I think, we're talking 21 stories, and also, can you update? The last time I heard about this city, Union City was still suing. Is that completely dropped? Is that, are we, are we going through with this? Or is this something that's going to take another five or 10 years before it will be done? Because then, I guess, who cares? But, you know, and also, the agreements are several, so maybe somebody can explain to me, Just Block, I guess it's one building, Hoboken Western Edge is another building, but there's like seven or eight buildings in the, in the complex. And I'd love to hear, finally, what mess we're getting into. I mean, this is a, this reminds me of the student that went to the professor and complained about a B, and ended up with an F. This is what exactly we are done. We started with 701 apartments, and we end up with 1,300, and maybe 1,600. Can somebody clarify, how many apartments, how many parking spots are we getting in Hoboken, in that, you know, area? Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. And maybe to answer part of that question, Mr. Arthur Neiss. Yep, okay, just a sec, Arthur, if you'd give Councilman a moment? Commence.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Arthur M. Neiss, N-E-I-S-S. I am a member of the law firm BD Patavano. Earlier today, my partner, John J. Lamb, submitted a letter to the council. I have additional copies up here if anyone would like to review it. To answer Roberto's question, in my partner's letter, the Just Block 112, 1,300 Jefferson Street, calls for 357 residential units with only 304 parking spaces. With regard to Hoboken Western Edge, 1,200 through 1,330 Madison Street, it calls for 701 residential units with 526 parking spaces. I'm not going to go through my partner's letter completely, but just give you a 40,000-foot view by telling you that I do here represent Palisades Cliffs Protection Alliance, a nonprofit corporation of the state of New Jersey. As this council is well aware, we have commenced litigation on behalf of Pacific Cliffs Protection Alliance, PCPA, and we are challenging the settlement agreements pursuant to which these resolutions are apparently following. We believe that these settlement agreements call for what's called contract zoning, which is illegal in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
It stands to reason that if the courts determine that the settlement, that the settlement agreement and/or the ordinances giving rise to those settlement agreements are found to be illegal, the actions that I predict you folks will take tonight will also be found illegal. Suffice to say, as I just did, that there are substantial parking deficits under these redevelopment agreements. I went through them, and these are supported by the exhibits to Mr. Lamb's letter, one of which was an analysis done by a parking consultant and a traffic consultant that we retained for purposes of the planning board. The bottom line is that the council still has time to fix the problems that have been raised in the litigations. Among those are this community benefit payments, which in one is, calls for $50,000, and in the second, calls for $3 million. It's not been determined how these figures were arrived at, and their purpose, what they are, what they are supposed to be accomplishing, has not been made clear. That's an issue. I would also note, and Council President Doyle, you're part of the planning board, and you're well aware of the fact that the planning board put forward a recommendation concerning the lot coverage on these projects be reduced, but apparently, Ordinance B 808 did not do that. I will just finally say that the, the, the projects at issue here suffer from parking and lot coverage issues. I would also note, as somebody earlier did, that following the November elections, a new administration will inherit the problems raised by the litigations and the steps that I predict that you will take tonight. The simple fact of the matter is that the scale of these projects does not fit within this area. The effect on the city's infrastructure should not be underestimated. I feel for the people in this city who have been without water, and for those who've had to boil their water because of the infrastructure failure. I don't even need to reach the parking question. I'm not usually prone to hyperbole, but all of these factors that I've just named are going to be a disaster for this city. My client is in favor of reasonable development because it believes that what, that is what is best for this city. However, these projects do not represent reasonable development. That's not what is being proposed. My client believes that Councilman Russo in the past has expressed concerns with such a large project, and in, has voted those concerns. My client believes that the litigations that we are involved in will ultimately be successful. This council should begin, at this point, by beginning to stop this huge development. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neiss. I will just make a point, just factually, I did, we received the letter from Mr. Lamb at 5:00 today, and actually, the clerk's office very promptly forwarded it to the council members. But I can't, number one, the letter starts by saying, please include it in the record, and that's not how we operate as far as mailing in to be part of the record. The record is here tonight. But you've represented many of the things in the letter, so I just wanted to let you know that. wanted to let you know that not only because of the receiving it at 5:15 on the day of a meeting, it's difficult for us to absorb it. You've, you've provided it to us here and people can look at it, but, but it won't be included in the record as a letter, but your testimony will be, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Romano, I believe.
Jerry.
Yep.
Good evening, honored members of the city council and residents of Hoboken. Couple of things. One, I apologize, Jim told me to come back at 9:00, so I left the food though when I come back, Jim.
I apologize, we were getting through.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. On a businessman note, I hope that the council will rethink the idea of the cameras for various reasons. There seems to be, we formed, and my compliments to those that voted against it to begin with, there seems to be a disconnect between this Hoboken Business Alliance and the businesses.
Just a second, Jerry, no, okay? There's a number of other speakers, so just wait. I apologize.
No, no problem.
So, so don't, don't bring him back, okay? Thank you.
So with that being said, we pay a business alliance tax. We seem to have someone who I think that was let go recently that didn't communicate with us, and now we have a situation where our deliveries may be affected because of the fact that they have to double park because there's somebody in the loading zones. And also, no one's enforcing the buses that do not pull into the bus stop. Someone should be calling New Jersey Transit and advising them to have their inspectors, who's supposed to follow the buses, to ensure that they go in the bus stops. So before it's continued at this pace, I hope that the council will work with the businesses to come to an equitable solution so that we don't get punished anymore and to enforce this business alliance connection to the community they're supposed to serve. We do pay a tax and it's more than just watering flowers on poles. The other thing I wanted to add to with regards to traffic, Marshall Street used to be the outlet going out of Hoboken. Because of supposedly a complaint of a couple residents, it was reversed so they could turn in. Now, traffic is backed up constantly on Monroe and Harrison because that outlet is gone. They have to wait to go up two lights before they can make a turn. So consider the experiment's failure or to be at least reviewed. I just want to thank you for that. And also, if we can, I want to thank the Park and Authority Director. We have been without doors that work on Garage G for almost a year. And I know it's frustrated our councilmen, but it seems that the new director is finally going to get doors fixed, since we paid for, at least for a whole year, the doors haven't been working. So again, I thank those that, you know, affected by that and looking forward to continue to work with you. We can find solutions where this will all make some kind of balance and make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Cameron McLeod.
Cameron McLeod of Gibbons, PC, here on behalf of Just Block 112 LLC as well as Hoboken Western Edge LLC, the redevelopers that are the subject of the redevelopment agreements on CD4 and CD5. It's interesting to, to put this all into context, starting back in 2007, when this council first designated the Western Edge as an area in need of redevelopment. And since then, in the intervening 18 years, there have been any number of...
It was 2015.
No, 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 the original designation was, was seven, but, you know, 18, 18 years. It's been fits and starts, as I think this council more, is more than aware. Any number of proposals, any number of development proposals, and I think after protracted litigation involving the principles behind the, the Palisades Cliff Protection Alliance, as well as, you know, the interest in, in redevelopment projects, both in Union City and Hoboken that those entities hold, we're finally to a point where we can move forward with the redevelopment agreements that are the settlements and resolutions of the settlements that were penned almost a year ago. So I'm really excited to see these on the agenda this evening. You know, we're, we're quite excited to see these move forward. I think the concerns that have been voiced all have been addressed by virtue of the redevelopment plan amendments, by virtue of the agreements themselves, and we're really looking forward to delivering a high-quality product for the people of Hoboken. And it's been, like I said, 18 years. We're happy to finally get this over, over the, over the finish line, and I thank each and every member of the council for their support along the way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Pardon? It depends on what, Patricia Waiters. Patricia, can you, do you know what you're going to be speaking on?
Yes, I do. Only two things, everything else I yield back.
Can you tell me the numbers, just so that Mr. Councilman Ramos may or may not be...
The Western Edge was CD4.
Yeah. Okay, so, yep. Go ahead, that's fine, thank you.
And the parking cameras, that's later on.
Okay.
Okay. With respect to the Western Edge, I find that a little disingenuine. All of this lawsuit started with Ravi Bala not getting support from Brian Stat. I'm really upset because I did my homework and I followed y'all the last two years. I think it's respectful that Councilman Ramos went and excluded himself, but why Emily, whoever else took money from this developer in any type of way, anybody that had any dealings with this Western Edge should have been in the hallway with Ruben. Okay? It's wrong, and you got to explain to people that's watching this and members of the public, all of this happened because they wanted to play politics. I heard that again tonight. When you don't like somebody individually and bad blood links through your veins, this ain't the way to go about it, because good members of the public and their family members and their loved ones suffer from the impact. Now, with Ruben being respectful, you know who you are. I'm not saying your name, Michael, Emily, or whoever else took money, okay, for their, for their campaigning or whatever. Anybody that had any dealings with this Western Edge should exclude themselves also like Ruben. It's not good. Any type of dealing, I don't care what it is, if this people supported your campaigns, okay, I'm gonna try to stay calm. If people supported, be respectful, at least to members of the public, please. This man was gonna build affordable housing. We gotta be suffering and we can't have affordable housing because y'all wanted to play politics. And, and we, yes, it goes back to Mayor Bala, Phil. Yes, it does. Thank you, I did my homework. I'll be back to speak on the other one.
Well, it's now. Patricia?
Oh, I'm excited.
You can speak on that one now, too. Take your breather and then...
I'm gonna miss you, and you ain't running again. I'm upset, Doyle. Anyway, listen, the camera lights, is that from Parking Utility, right? The new Parking Utility Director? I just find it a little mind-bothering. Let me just get to the point, because I ain't good with covering up. I'm gonna be direct. When y'all voted for this man to come, Ryan Sharp left, y'all all voted anonymously to let this new director come in. This is my opinion. Why are you bringing a camera here? And I worked in Jersey City when Steve fooled up and Steve was just the councilman, when they pulled them red cameras, because they kept getting sued for these to take the picture of the car and send the ticket in the mail. I want to know that the new Parking Utility Director initiated this, because he stood at this very same microphone and said, I said, who are you? What are you doing in Hoboken? He said, I work for Bloomberg. I said, Bloomberg from New York? Don't bring that New York mess over here. And he did it, okay? So I want to know that he initiated this parking thing, because my police department was doing a good enough job. I don't need nobody stepping on my chief toes. I want to know who initiated this and what this program is about, and they better not put a ticket on my car.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. The director's in the back of the room, if you want to ask him. And that is...
Call Ruben Dunn or no?
Oh, yes.
Councilman Ramos, he's coming. Motion to close public portion here.
Alex says it.
Alex, would you like to have me add your name to the list? Are you, can you tell me what you're going to speak on?
New business cleared.
Okay, that, that's fine, then. Yep, thank you. I mean, for reasons of... Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, city council, and to the residents of Hoboken. I'm actually right now going to speak to the residents. I would like you guys to take note to the councilmen who voted for this. I want to thank Ruben for voting against this. Unfortunately, none of these councilmen live on Washington Street. I just want to know what am I going to do on Washington Street when I gotta drop off groceries, or drop off laundry bags, drop off the kids? Am I supposed to be going in circles on Washington because there's no parking at all? I just want to, I want an honest opinion, you guys. Please, give me an idea, what am I supposed to do? As a resident, I'm asking for the residents of Hoboken to take note of this, the people who live on Washington Street, and whoever is running for mayor and runs for mayor to make a positive change against this. I want to thank Ruben for going against this, by the way. I mean, to charge me to drop off my daughter, taking off the car seat, double parking quickly, I'm gonna get a ticket for $150? As a resident, besides the parking increase, it's, it's insane that you guys are actually gonna go ahead and go along with this and vote for it. Please rethink this correctly or it's gonna burn you. Especially people running for mayor. Secondly, I spoke last week, the last city council regarding my mom's building, and I couldn't bring this up. So, here you go. This is Bloomfield. Turning onto Bloomfield, going to in front of the Colombian Towers, permanent parking in front of it. Can you drop off your mother there? Actually, I spoke to my, my in-law this past weekend, and they went to, to a therapist. They saw my brother dropping off my mom. And like, and Hispanic is like, is your brother crazy, dropping off your mom, double parking there? He couldn't because there's no space to drop off a mother on the, on the spot that's supposed to be in front of the Colombian Towers. Why? Because it's permanent, people parking there permanently overnight, or even the afternoon. Why? Because there's no parking between Observatory Highway, between Washington and Bloomfield. That was that, this is another one, that was the day. That's the day, coming over here. You guys do, you guys about stats, statistics, correct? So why don't you guys have somebody in front of the Colombian Towers, see how many people parking there and people who drop off their things, their mothers and fathers? I want resolution, I want a solution, because if not, I give you my word by next Thursday, and Ruben, and Ruben, you know I'm in the fraternity, I have the, the director of media of Univision, Channel 41, I'll have him in front of the Colombian Towers next Thursday. I give you my word on it. I want a solution by next Wednesday, what we're gonna do about that. I want either Observatory Highway that should be cleared, or we're gonna have problems. I'm gonna have media exposed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. There are no other members of the public, no, there's one other member of the public. Could you please state your name and spell it, if it's not Smith?
Sure. My name is Ernie Reyes. I'm the owner of Ace Hardware. It's E-R-N-I-E-R-E-Y-E-S.
Yep, I got it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm speaking about the automated enforcement on Washington Street. My family has owned Ace since 1978. I've worked there since I'm eight years old. I'm 56 now. I'm in fear of losing my business. My entire family has worked at this store, my mom, my dad, my sister, my kids, my wife, cousins, and family of employees have all been working there for many years, plus many people from the community. City Paint has served this community since 1931. Bump outs, long bus stops, and EV charging stations have reduced parking to five legal spots on our side of the block. Buses do not pull in and they don't need such a long spot. Now you want to reduce stopping, just stopping, stopping in front of a business for a slice of pizza. Maybe alcohol, maybe your laundry. There's five spots on my side of the block. There's a reduction in customer accessibility to stores, and this will kill Washington Street. There's been no public comment, business owners have not been informed at all. This was a surprise to all of us on Friday when this was released. New rules may cause businesses to have to pay for access to the curb. Fees that increase costs with inflation that we already have, we don't need it. We have monetization of the curb. This is part of this plan. If you want to park a truck, a delivery truck, or a truck that you're receiving deliveries on, you're going to have to pay for that ability to receive a delivery. This is only going to increase costs in a very expensive town that is very hard to live in. Anybody that wants to bring their groceries into their home and stops, this is going to affect them. This is not just me. I know that you spoke about everybody here talking about themselves. I'm concerned about this city. It is very difficult to live here. Anything that you want to do, you have to get a bike or on a scooter, there's no other way. And, and this is going to be the death nail for my business, and I'm the only business that really tries to service a wide variety of products for this community. This leads, monetization of the curb, you must pay for access to the city with flex zones and smart curbs. This leads to a lack of movement. People are afraid to get a ticket. People are afraid to stop. You cannot even pause to get a slice of pizza. All in the name of safety. Brent, Ben Franklin said, "Those who give up liberty for security deserve neither." And that's where we're headed. This will deter customers and send them to competitors, which is already happening. My elderly dad, who's 83, visits the store once or twice a week. Requires a lot of time to get him out of the car, walk him inside, go find parking. This is five, 10 minutes sometimes. It's very, very difficult, and I help him personally. This will cause a huge drop-off in business. There's been no economic study of the financial impact of this to the businesses in Hoboken that have been serving, so for so many years, loyally. We also have other trends like the mollification of Hoboken with Nike, Ambergrami, all the salad places, Chipotle, et cetera. You're losing the character to corporate chain stores. There's less mom-and-pop stores. You're removing caring owner operators instead of corporate America. Plenty of empty storefronts we have already, we don't need to add to this. Business is hard enough. Increases in online retailers, roll and big box, they will have the priority for parking. You already see Amazon on the corners and they're there all day and nobody bothers them and nobody says a word to them, they're parked on the sidewalk. Their front tire is parked on the sidewalk. This removes local circulation of people who live in Hoboken and can't afford to walk that much. Not everybody can take a bike. If you want to live in this town past the age of 65 and you don't bike every day, you're not in the best shape, that means you cannot move around this town. This increases the cost for contractors and tradesmen, which is my business, but anybody who does any work in their house is going to have a very difficult time and it's going to be very expensive. This is not good policy, not just for me, but for the citizens and visitors of this great city. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I think Armando may want to speak.
I'm sure there are. Okay. Armando?
Armando, that's A-R-M-A-N-D-O-L-U-I-S.
Yep.
I'm a 45-year resident of 126 Washington Street, two doors down from City Paint. In fact, my father bought our Sparrow Wine and Liquor Company the same year and was friends with Ernie's, Ernie's father. I'm also the owner of La Isla, 104 Washington, and together my two businesses employ about 50 people on the block. I'm here to speak against the idea of automated law enforcement, which I think is, in essence, un-American, as it removes your right to face your, your accuser. And we should be careful what power we give government and law enforcement. Now, that being said, there is no doubt that there is a safety issue and a quality of life issue on Washington Street. As I said, I've lived there for 45 years, I have seen it all. I have seen it all, probably more than possibly any other resident of Hoboken. So, if the issue is safety, then we should address bigger issues, such as the insanity that takes place every day from the electric bikes, that are completely disobeying all rules, parking, and traffic, and, and anything else that, that may apply to them. So, that, that is a bigger issue. If it's a matter of law enforcement, this automated system could bring much bigger issues than it resolves. For one, we should all be, how many of you drive 65 miles an hour on the New Jersey Turnpike? So, if we're going to take this to, to its ultimate potential, then we, we should all be worried, uh, we should all expect a ticket from the, you know, state police every time we exceed 65 miles an hour. I don't think law enforcement was meant to be enforced in such a, such a black and white way. And if the issue is quality of life, I can tell you that, uh, that what we should be addressing is, again, the issue of the mayhem taking place on Washington Street, which has turned Washington Street into, uh, I'm afraid of what terminology to use, but it certainly is not what you would expect to experience in what is potentially the best city in the state of New Jersey. And then there's the business community with Ernie addressed. You know, people stop at La Isla all the time to pick up a quick few and sandwich. That takes about one minute. Now, if they're going to get a $55 ticket, guess what? They're not going to be coming back. And then let's talk about the logistics of, by, by the way, my businesses generate more of, more deliveries and usage of the electric bikes than anyone else on, on, on Washington Street. I mean, on, on First and Washington. So, I am, I accept the reality of, uh, the at-home market, and we should address that issue as, as, as a whole. But that doesn't mean that we should tolerate complete, uh, complete disregard for traffic laws and, and other laws, such as parking your electric bike on, on the middle of Washington Street, on the middle of the sidewalk on Washington Street, or zigzagging through traffic. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've been sitting there at La Isla, as I often do, and, you know, all of a sudden, some guy goes by at 25 miles an hour on the sidewalk. You know, now, I'm also a cyclist, okay? And I've probably ridden my bike as much as anyone in Hoboken in the last 40 years. So, I am, I am a supporter of, of cycling. So, I, I know, at no point do I take light, lightly, all the issues that, that this law is trying to address. So, I, um, but I do think that we need to have a much more comprehensive approach. I mean, I just learned this, I have to admit, I mean, my fault, that I really wasn't aware of this, of this situation until Ernie brought it up ju, only a few days ago. So, anyway, I think that we are dealing with a much bigger issue here than simply, uh, loading zones, or, uh, bus stops, things of that nature. I mean, downtown Hobo, downtown USA, and Hoboken is, uh, poster child for downtown USA, is in trouble. In trouble not because anyone is trying to attack it, but because, uh, you know, bigger forces are at hand, such as the Amazon effect and all that other stuff. So, what I think should happen here is that this should be postponed.
Mr. Luis?
Until there's a new administration that is going to not only deal with passing this law, but also dealing with the consequences of this law. So, I don't have the answers, but, uh, I don't have all the answers, but for sure, I think that this requires a lot more thoughtful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you could tell us your name and...
Chloe, C-H-L-O-E, last name is P-U-T-O-N.
I'm sorry.
Last name is Puton, P-U-T-O-N. Sorry, I realized I signed up the wrong sheet. So, I just wanted to address CD4 and CD5. So, as a 10-year resident of Hoboken, and someone who is raising my son here, and really came to the community and fell in love with it because of the scale of Hoboken and the community feel of Hoboken, developments like this make me worried for the direction that the city is heading, especially when you consider it as part of the overall development that's occurring. Um, yeah, Hoboken is unique and a wonderful place to live and raise a family. However, you know, just hearing in this meeting, the number of quality of life issues and things that have been discussed around the mayoral election, like safety issues, water main breaks, which obviously top of mind, was around parking, traffic, dog poop, not to mention the looming issue of not having enough space at schools, particularly at our middle school. All of these will not get better with overdevelopment. I'm not anti-development, just a 1,300-unit, um, building in conjunction with everything else seems very out of scale for the rest of the city. So, you know, and it sounds like they're all getting tax abatements. So, questions out of this come, like, what are your plans for the infrastructure to support these new massive developments? How much will they be footed by the taxpayers? Because this, clearly, the infrastructure here in many ways can't handle it. So, I would just urge the council to think about the strain that things like this would place on our already taxed city, both in the literal and metaphorical sense. So, yeah, that's, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Thank you, Ms. Puton. No other members of the public are signed up to speak?
Question, Nicholas, public portion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Council members, consent agenda. Anything would you like, you would like polled?
T4, T5, T1, but T1's quick. And we could probably do it all at once, just quick.
The T4 and T5?
T1, T4, T5. And, and again, I don't, it's not detailed, it's just quick questions.
Okay, Mr. Farina, everything except T1, 4, and 5?
Hold, you are heist.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you're, what?
I'm, I'm, I'm out, I'm 64 and 65.
Okay.
Do you want to just pull them to vote?
We'll just pull them in, and we'll just vote.
We'll just pull them to vote.
Okay.
And then you can go for those.
I put up a stamp.
But you're going, so you're pulling CD4 and CD5.
Yeah, so they're being polled for that reason. Yep. Anything else? Anybody going once? Okay, did you get that, Jimmy?
Yes.
Okay, so on everything other than CD4, CD5, T1, T4, T5? Call the vote. Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Jabour?
Yes.
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
I'm staying on CD2. Aye on the rhythm.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle? Aye. Okay, let's pause for a moment, take a breath.
Aye.
We'll do CD4 and CD5 together in a moment. Any council members who want to speak on?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yeah, um, just, uh, on both of these, just a quick summary. I think what happened, you know, this, this was a settlement from a couple of years ago that was effectively required by the courts. I think the public finally saw, um, a, a picture of the proposed project. We never really had a picture of it, and Jersey Digs did an article a couple of days ago, so I'm sure my colleagues and I, or share with me that everyone's gotten a bunch of emails, a little overwhelmed with the scale of this. You know, this is, uh, just to remind everyone, this is a situation where we were settling a lawsuit for, um, that the developer had filed against the city of Hoboken, specifically the mayor. And, and it was for Mayor Balla changing his mind. We had approved a much, about half the size of this years ago. You heard the attorney for, um, the developer come up today. This developer has been trying to get something approved on this site since 2007. And we, as a governing body, approved, um, a smaller-scale project on both, both these two sites. We celebrated it. It was going to fund an additional 17, 18 units for, um, homeless veterans and expand our American Legion. The mayor went out, and of course, you know, championed it, had a lot of big headlines, told the news, et cetera. And then he caught wind from Mayor Stack up in Union City, who was concerned about the impact on the, um, the views of buildings up there. And, and the mayor changed his mind. He didn't get city council approval for it, he just changed his mind. We went through, there were nine counts in the lawsuit. We lost five of them, four or five of them, and the planning board was told that they had to approve it. And what was left were the remaining counts for the kind of conspiracy, breach of contract, tortuous interference, like all the bad stuff, like the bad quasi-illegal stuff. And we ended up having to settle, and our choice at the time was effectively giving double density to this developer, or taxpayers paying $50 million, right? Those were our two choices.
You're speculating on...
Speculate, totally speculating, totally speculating. But, and at the time, I had recommended that we take the negotiation of that settlement away from the mayor, because, right, his interests were not aligned with the city. This, uh, the majority, we didn't have a majority vote to support that. So, the mayor got to negotiate with your taxpayer dollars and your, uh, development burden, a settlement, uh, basically the settlement terms. I want to be clear that I'm friends with this developer. We're all friends, we all live in Hoboken, we're friends with a lot of developers. They didn't do anything wrong at all. They had a project that the city council approved, and for political reasons, the mayor was afraid that, so he's told multiple people that in 2021, Brian, Mayor Stack, State Senator Stack, would run someone against Mayor Balla in the 2021 election. And he's told multiple people, I can't have that. So, we're here now with this giant massive development on the West Side because of that. So, I have never voted, I, you'll hear me say tonight, I just vote present on this because I can't even imagine that we have to, like, even contemplate this project because of the bad and what I believe are illegal behaviors of this mayor. So, um, I know, it's okay, everyone else can laugh, but that's what we're voting on tonight. It is a settlement. We didn't have really a choice. So, it will be approved, but just so you know, there's some history there, and most of the people in the public weren't aware of the history until they saw that big, huge picture in Jersey Digs that really kind of illustrated exactly, you know, what happened and the scale of the settlement. So, just some background.
Council member? Other councilman?
Councilman Russo? Thank you, Council President. I've, I've talked about this project for a long time, and I think there was a third option that wasn't articulated in, in Councilwoman Fisher's comments, and that was to actually vote no on that settlement. And, and I did. I voted no on that settlement because I didn't think that the size and the scale of the settlement fit in the city of Hoboken. I still think that the size and the scale of this project does not fit in the city of Hoboken. But my colleagues voted for that settlement, and now the city is exactly where it is. We have a, we have either to abide by the settlement that this council voted for, or we don't. And I think it's disturbing to know that that third option wasn't explored more, because we could have voted no then and forced the mayor back to the table to renegotiate. And I don't know how different it would have been. I don't know if it would have been, you know, 1,200 units, or only 1,000 units, or whatever it would have been. But I think we should have, and I think it was our obligation then, to force that back to the table, to have that conversation. Unfortunately, that's not what happened, and we are where we are right now. So, I, I just want to, I just want to really articulate that, because I think it's important for everybody to understand that there's always that third option. And this city council decided not to exercise that option, and now we have to make a choice tonight. So, I appreciate it.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Council President. I want to turn back the clock a little bit further with respect to this project. In June of 2014, I was a zoning board commissioner on the Hoboken Zoning Board. We saw an application for this property that was two 13-story towers. I remember Councilwoman Fisher and others criticizing the, me for supporting that project as being too large and out of scale for the neighborhood. I was in the minority of the zoning board. If I was in the majority of that zoning board, we'd be looking at a much, much, much smaller project, which is much more in line with what the Fifth Ward should have than what we are facing here today. So, you know, hindsight is 2020, but, but, you know, the criticism that I received and the other zoning, I believe Councilman DeFusco may have voted with me on that one, but we were, we were in the minority. That would have been a much better situation for the city if that had been approved. It's unfortunate that, that I couldn't convince the majority of the zoning board to approve it, but this is where we are. This is a settlement. The council has previously approved this settlement. There was a significant taxpayer liability that we were facing if, if the case had gone forward, and on the advice of council, this was our best way out of the litigation. It is unfortunate. I don't think anybody's happy about it, but it does not cost the taxpayers any dollars. It does not. It, it provides density, and it provides things that are, that are out of scale with the neighborhood. I concede that, but it is not going to be a tax bill to pay an adverse judgment, which is what we were potentially looking at. So, again, if we could turn back the clock, I wish I could have persuaded a few other zoning board commissioners in 2014 to vote yes on that project, and fortunately, we didn't, and here we are today. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Quintero?
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I agree kind of with most people, we're not the best building size, et cetera, that we'd want to see, but unfortunately, we are where we are, and there's a settlement, and you abide by it, right? We, we agree to it, and we, we stick to our words, right? I commend Councilman Russo for, uh, for doing the right thing here, right? And, and the right thing here is, if you, if you abided, if we're going to abide by the settlement, say yes. Don't hide behind a vote. Say yes. Sometimes we have to do things up here that frankly, the folks in the community might not be happy with, but we're obligated to. So, when you're obligated to do something, you stand up and you say yes. You vote in the affirmative. And you don't hide behind it. So, I'll be voting yes. I wish it was smaller, but to Councilman Cohen's point, it's not going to cost us any money. If we didn't abide by it, it would cost us, I guess, $50 million or more. So, I'm not going to stick us with...
Or less.
Alleged $50 million.
Thanks.
So, there we go. That's where we are.
Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman Jabour?
I was just going to add, um, you know, I think people, Councilwoman Fisher mentioned this, the visual that came out in the Jersey Digs article was a little overwhelming, I think that is the right word for it. But I do just want to point out that that was, that is considered a concept rendering. It is not actually the final design, is my understanding. So, I think we're in an undesirable position with respect to the settlement agreement, but that is not the final project as it will end up moving forward, and there will be opportunity for further discussion. So, just to add something. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as the only member who voted against every single amendment and, with this project, except for the settlement at the end, I obviously am not happy with this, but as, has been discussed about our closed session, which doesn't make me happy, we were faced with an option, and it was, it was not great, and a decision was made. So, I would like to not be supporting this tonight, but I will be, because we decided to go down the settlement route and to make the decision that we made, and this is the deal we made. So, it would be somewhat irrational to, to oppose it now... So it would be somewhat irrational to oppose it now that we've already agreed to it. So, Mr. Freena, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Just a second, is this both CD4 and CD5?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Right, so it'll be both, okay?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Present.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Please Chief, if you could inform Councilman Ramos that he, T1. Mr. Freena, would you like me to read the title? Give you a break?
Yes, thank you.
It's a resolution awarding a contract for construction services to Your Way Construction, Inc., for Frank Sinatra Drive Complete Streets Redesign Phase II of Two for Frank Sinatra Drive Per N Close in the amount of $8,287,156.69 to be funded by B493.
You want to do all four at once? They're going to be quick questions, so.
Why don't we just, so I don't have to read?
Director?
Sorry about that. He can sit in the front row between.
They're rather quick questions, so I.
Evening, Councilman.
Director Weber, thank you.
When's it going to be done?
We expect the project will take about a year, once they break ground.
So, including the seawall, right? So once they do the seawall, then this is happening? Or like, I'm kind of like asking about everything there?
So we, we expect that this contract will begin late fall or over the winter.
So that'll mean that the seawall will be completed, Sinatra will be semi-open again? Is that correct?
We, we expect that the seawall project will be largely complete by then.
Okay. Should I ask the other questions and then?
Yeah, well. Yeah, go ahead.
The Carlisle Contract Technology, I believe this is for the parking, yeah, Carlisle, to make the, or to have the.
So for the public, this is T4 that we're now talking about.
All right, trying to speed this up because I know some people are here to talk. This is for our parking utility attendants to use their little iPads for ticketing for parking, correct?
Yes, they, they provide a lot of backend support.
None of the cameras on the, that's a different person.
Unrelated.
Unrelated, okay. T5, help me out on this one.
This is a resolution approving a change order to the city's contract with Revax Contracting Corp. for the construction of 15th Street roadway improvements and the increased amount of $217,936.54, which is 8.24% increase for the original contract of a number that was 8.4% less than that. Funded by New Jersey DOT FY23 municipal aid grants, Z299, Z416, Z498, B5, B47, and B493. Sorry about that.
No, it's all right, thank you. I just wanted to learn a little bit more on that. Like, this is just cost of what? Did we find more problems?
So, it's some increased amounts for specific items, including five large trees, 124 linear feet of tree pick guard, 290 square yards of additional concrete, and 10 additional, 10 square yards of reinforced sidewalk. As well as modifications to the knee wall, relocation of electrical conduit, gas main relocation, helical manhole piles, drainage structure modifications, traffic control, striping modifications, just cutting and disposal of train tracks, all things that were not understood when the contract was let.
So when he bid the contract, he didn't?
He missed the train track.
What's that?
He missed the train tracks.
He missed the train tracks?
Well, the train tracks, the train traps were not excavated at that point.
Hmm. This is the same story that we get the contracts, and then suddenly 8.24% increase, even though they're paid for by grants and funds and everything else. I mean, if I, I'm going to creep, keep reiterating this, that majority of municipal contracts come back, we approve them up here, even though they're bonded, even though we get grants, people just come back and keep taking a second bite at the apple, realizing, let me, you know, we get four or five bids for things, and then we go with one, and then before you know it, it's back to the highest person. I get it when you dig under the ground here, but, you know, it's the same story every single contract. I'm more than sure if I asked for an audit of this, that majority of municipal contracts would come back, that every one of them has an increase in it. And as we sit here and we look about money, you know, at some point when somebody bids this, they got to eat the bullet, they got to eat it, right? If you bid on a contract and you don't, you, you put extra gravy in it, usually in your bid, for unforeseen things. When you dig down in the road, you know you're going to get unforeseen things, so you price that when you bid something out, not come back to us afterwards. So now, this probably has the votes tonight to pass, but I just want to reiterate to all the directors that, you know, every single one of these, always these increases come back. When are we going to hold the people doing the work for us responsible for that? When you bid on it, it's yours. When I bid on something, when I was trading and I mispriced it, I had to eat that cost. Well, how about we start making them eat the cost? If they mispriced it, hey, sorry, you mispriced it. You have to eat the cost. But we don't do that. We just come back to the council and think we're piggy banks up here. And that's why some of the problems that were in some of the financial straits. So I'd like to take that back, and all the directors that are here, that guys, we can't let people do. You bid on a contract, that's your contract. Fix it, do the job.
Was there a question for Director Weber?
Well, I'm just more saying that.
I'm listening.
But I'm more like, it's just the list of what you told me. I'm like, again, some are small, some are big, some are whatever. But I mean, at the end of the day, I was just more curious, is like 8.24% increase, it sounds like the person didn't bid the contract, right? So hopefully in the future, when we bid, it's final, you have to eat the cost if you screw it up. Or if you screwed up the bid, you have to eat it. I'd like to see that going forward. Thank you.
Councilman, would you like to break these into?
No, no, we can do them all at once. Yes, because I will be voting no on T5. You can put two, you can put T1 and T5 together? T1 and T4, I'm happy to.
All right, with T4 is a resolution to extend term of contract to Carlisle Technologies for Hosting Support Maintenance Supplemental Hardware and Software Enhancement to the Hoboken Parking Utilities Proprietary Parking Enforcement Management System. So Mr. Freena, if you could call the vote on T1 and T4?
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye. And now, T5, if you're ready to call it?
Resolution approving change order.
I already read it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I mean, you're welcome to, if you'd like. I said, please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
No.
President Doyle?
Aye. Okay, so now.
Ordinances?
We are at public portion now, Mr. Freena, because we're trying something new.
Switching it up.
I know that there were a number of people who indicated when they came up that they had signed up in the wrong place. So if I call your name and you did not sign up for the public portion, feel free to let us know. You don't feel, you're not compelled to come up for five minutes. I believe Anthony Romano, Commissioner Romano is not in the room, so I don't believe he is a good example. Stuart Trichella, Trichella, I thought I was close to that. And Stuart is not here. I'm just trying to crawl up from under the seat. Patricia Waiters? This is the public portion, yes.
Pat Waiters. I'm still just a little disturbed, oh, Mr. Cohen left too. All right, this is about the not to exceed amount, a little what he was just discussing. I mean, I find it troubling too, that the contracts, like you said, when you take a, that was you, Mr. Doyle, or Mr. Cohen?
I believe it was.
About the contract. When you take a contract, and I mean.
Mr. Councilman President Zano, I believe.
Yeah, because I'm getting more and more disgusted every time I see this, because I came up here for the last couple of years. When something say not to exceed, if I go take a contract and sign the contract and then come across whatever, when you say not to exceed $25,000, don't exceed $25,000. Don't give them another penny. I wonder why you guys still vote and give it to them anyway? You know what I'm saying? He did that long speech, but you still give them the money anyway. And this make Ryan Sharp look bad. Remember, y'all hired him after Ryan Sharp. Parking utility, we need all of this stuff done. Ryan Sharp didn't see that? He was doing the same exact pattern. Now he naming sidewalks and all of this other extra stuff. Well, then what was the last director doing? Because you can't get in touch with neither one of them. And they not from here. In the future, I don't care who's running for mayor or who become the mayor, we got to stop talking about it and be about it. Stop doing that. Let's deal with who we have that live right here in Hoboken. These directors leave at the end of the day and go back to New York, wherever they from. It's not fair to us. These feed, this is a lot of money. And every week, it's the same thing at every meeting, not to exceed, but then y'all pick on small people like Blue Violet, somebody that already started the business. My heart go out to her. That's why I came out tonight too also, because her business is fine. You don't even know the place there. And you want to pick something petty to argue about because it's an election. I'm waiting for one of y'all to wake up and be smart and do the opposite of the playbook. Y'all using the same playbook. And I feel bad for members of the public because they think they're going to get different results. It's crazy. And it shows a huge disrespect to members of the public. This is our meeting. Y'all coming here grandstanding, we not fooled. We are not fooled, we know exactly what's going on. Now, to let this man come here, and I felt sorry for the young man too with the business, to let this man come here and put cameras up in our town, y'all, we have to live here, he don't live here. This is ridiculous. When y'all vote, start voting like that. Think about the residents that live here in Hoboken that's going to be impacted because you got the majority, and y'all know it's going to pass, and y'all just call the vote. That have to stop in Hoboken. Please, every member that's watching this or the public, wake up, guys. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waiters. Michael Batua?
Michael.
No, it's just Michael, I'm sorry. It sounds a little more impressive.
Good evening, esteemed council, I'm Michael Batua. I'm a Hoboken resident for about 23 years. And I'm here to speak on behalf of a rapidly growing group of residents who are concerned. And we came here with one clear ask, which is to remove 122 Clinton Street from the hospital redevelopment zone and to realign the ordinance with Hoboken's master plan. The master plan intent is clear, which is to protect the human scale of our interior neighborhoods and to direct the height and mass of buildings to the perimeter and to the transit-oriented areas. This prevents piling congestion and infrastructure strain onto blocks that are already at capacity and preserves Hoboken's historic and beautiful architecture. 122 Clinton is a dense interior site with historic significance. The planning board was right to recommend its removal from the redevelopment zone. But when council reinserted it in July with limited public input, it cut against both the plan's guidance and the board's recommendation. To me, this has the hall, the hallmarks of spot zoning, which is a parcel-specific exemption that benefits one project and one developer rather than the community, and it risks setting a citywide precedent for height and congestion creep. One of the council persons earlier today, I heard, say that we can't change the law for just one person or one company. I think he said it perfectly. So we all want a strong, well-run hospital in this town, but a proposed 10-story, 100-unit tower with 40 more cars is not going to improve the care of the hospital. It'll simply add traffic, it'll stress our sewers, and it'll worsen the flooding that still exists at Second and Clinton for the last 25 years that I've been here. So if modernization is needed for the hospital use, I'd say do it within the existing envelope and height of that building that preserves its architecture as well. That also honors the master plan, it strengthens the health care provided there, and it protects the neighborhood character that we all love. So in summary, please choose to, you know, please choose plan consistency over exceptions and remove 122 Clinton from the redevelopment zone. Keep the major height where the master plan intends, which is the designated edge areas, not mid-block in a residential area. So thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Batua. Ernie Reyes, is Ernie? Okay, thank you. Gil Rubin? Excuse me? If we remember. Okay. Jeff Gilroy?
Some familiar faces out here, I think we've all met recently. My name is Jeff Gilroy. I've been a Hoboken resident for about 15 years. I met my wife here on the original Northern Soul on First Street. Together, her and I, we waded through the streets of Hoboken through Hurricane Sandy. And we hunkered down here throughout the entire pandemic. We cheered on essential workers, we supported local businesses. That's me, I'm a Hoboken through and through. Just over a week ago, some representatives from HRH came to our building under the pretense of a separate topic and dropped on us their plan to build an uncharacteristically large residential building in the location of the Carepoint Building at 122 Clinton. They said it has been designated as a redevelopment zone. They said that they do not need to comply with any local zoning laws or do any impact studies. And they said they have five council members in their pocket that are ready to approve their plan. This is what they told us. They sounded quite confident. To be frank, we were stunned by the news, mostly because we had not heard a single thing about it. There was no notification sent to our building or a single resident in the building, no nixle. As it turns out, not a single resident or building in the entire neighborhood had heard a peep about this. But according to HR representatives, HRH representatives, this proposal was about to get voted on and passed. Through our own research, we learned that 122 Clinton is tied to the hospital through ownership alone, that it is not a blighted property in need of redevelopment, and that your own planning board voted to exclude it from the redevelopment zone. We also learned that during a meeting in July here, most, if not all of you, seemingly agreed that bundling 122 Clinton into a redevelopment zone with the hospital would be strictly in the interest of the developer and not in the interest of the community. But you did it anyway, and now here we are. As a devout resident and community member, the lack of transparency surrounding this decision and its motivational factors honestly just kind of makes me sad. I'm upset. I understand that you have a tough job here and that you probably quite often feel very unappreciated, but we depend on you. You're our elected officials. We depend on you to keep us in the loop and well-informed about things that affect our neighborhoods so that we, the people of this town, can share our thoughts and have a voice. The feeling on our side is that this was trying to be slipped past us very quietly, which has caused us to feel a serious level of distrust. To be clear, crystal clear, we are very much in favor of improving our hospital. Everyone deserves quality health care. And the employees of that hospital deserve better facilities than what they've had to deal with. But let's look at this plainly, please. It makes no sense to hinge a major, essential civic project like hospital revitalization on the revenue generated. civic project like hospital revitalization on the revenue generated by an up-zone residential building at 122 Clinton. Our essential healthcare services should not be held hostage to the success of an apartment complex, let alone an out-of-scale apartment complex that would sacrifice quality of life for current Hoboken residents. The inclusion of 122 Clinton in the redevelopment zone is simply a real estate deal dressed up as public necessity. We just simply ask that you motion to remove 122 Clinton from the redevelopment plan, protect our community by affirming Hoboken's master plan and our local R3 zoning laws. I mean, we think through this action that we can restore some of this lost trust. I gotta be honest, like, I'm standing up here by myself right now, but I'm not in this room alone. I got a lot of people behind me. And not to drive the point home, I spent like 65 minutes this morning standing on the corner of Clinton and First at the bus stop, just talking to your local residents. I've got over 56 signatures here from over 26 buildings, ranging from Harrison Street all the way down to Washington Street, up to Sixth Street, down to Newark. And to be honest, like, the only reason I didn't get more is because the buses kept coming too fast and kept picking people up and taking them away. That's the only reason. I could be packing papers, but your citizens, your people, your residents, they're upset, not just by this, but they're also upset because they feel that overdevelopment in this town is a snowball rolling down a hill. It's getting bigger. It's getting out of control. And I think your town's trying to tell you something, your residents, and I think your water main, your water is also trying to tell you something. It's breaking too much. I got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilroy. Mr. Dunning?
Thank you. My name is Chris Manning. I'm up here to reiterate a lot of what Jeff said. I think, I guess first, I think Councilman for his earlier comments about how we shouldn't be making laws for one party or one particular parcel of land. I think that's what a lot of us are here to talk about tonight. I'll try not to reiterate any of the points you've already heard, but I think a few things that would be useful for you to hear. We're not around against responsible development, right? A couple of months ago, I got a registered letter about a residential development going in the place of Lasadros. I love those sandwiches. I think they're better than Fiori sandwiches. I'd love to see Lasadros back, but we didn't show up at the planning board. That went through the normal planning board process. I'm sure they probably got whatever variance they were seeking to build that development. We're not against responsible development that's in line with the surrounding community. What we are against was this kind of secret vote that no one in the community was afford about, was told about that happened in July. This proposal for 10, they said it was 10. It's actually 11, we were told later. This is Menadee's floor, 11-story building in a residential zone that has four-story, five-story buildings max surrounding it. That's what we're against, not reasonable development that's in line with the surrounding community. I think we've since, since we've looked this up, we've found a lot of concerning things about the developer behind this development, right? An individual who was until a few months ago, chief of staff for the mayor and his aligned counselors, is now head of relations, one of the people at this shock meeting where they told us they had five counselors in their pocket. That's just disgusting. It's absolutely inappropriate. And anyone who's aligned with the mayor, with his chief of staff, who left and is now working for this developer, who's making these proposals, should absolutely be out of the room, the same way this gentleman was when earlier votes were being taken, where it wasn't appropriate for him to be involved. That's absolutely inappropriate. Significant donations have been made from this private developer who wants to build this large residential development to the mayor, to his aligned counselors. There's multiple RICO charges that have been filed against this developer. Lawsuits have been filed against him by patients who are exposed to HIV, hepatitis, as a result of improper sterilization at his other hospital facilities. His marketing director was arrested for stockpiling, I think it was 27 guns, in his other hospital facilities. This is not the person we want running our hospital in Hoboken. This is not the person we want to give money to by inappropriate upzoning. Even in the last week, we've heard after a number of meetings with a lot of you on the council separately, that the developer and their representatives have lied to you, right? We heard that after that shock meeting where everyone in our community who was there, which the meeting was held under false presences, so a lot of people weren't, everyone there expressed their shock, their outrage, and expressed how inappropriate it is, the proposed building was. And we made it clear that we would only support something in line, a development in line with the surrounding building. The developer then lied to certain council people and expressed that the community supported the development at that, at that meeting. It's clear from some of the meetings we've had with certain council people that there's a lot of misunderstanding as well on, under this topic that's been voted on. We've heard from various meetings in the last week since we found this out, from various people, that the hospital he's operating is for profit and is not for profit. Some have told us it's, the land and the hospital are owned by the same entity. Some of us have told, some have told us it's owned by separate entities. There's a complete lack of understanding. There's not been enough information for the council before this vote was taken in secret in July. I think when you look at the entities, it's clear, right? The entity that owns 122 Clinton Street is SB Hoboken Prop Co. That's not the entity that operates and runs the hospital. If you give that private developer, SB Hoboken Prop Co., $50 to $100 million from building 120 studio and one-bedroom units, it doesn't seem possible that he can use that money to invest in the hospital. Even if we put aside that question and we assume magically the council is able to negotiate some sort of airtight agreement that that money is invested in the hospital, the hospital went bankrupt because it was paying too much rent to the building owners, the landowners. That rent is clearly going to go up if another hundred to 100 million is invested in the hospital. It's going to accelerate the demise of the hospital. It's going to make it go bankrupt faster. And that's going to result in them being able to put luxury apartments on the same, on the same, on the block on the corner of Forth and, Forth and by the park that the hospital is on now. For all of these reasons, we're asking the council people to remove 122 Clinton from the redevelopment zone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Mr. Rubin, are you ready now?
I just want to also come here to speak about the redevelopment on the edge of Clinton's, Clinton's Second Street. I guess there's not much, you just say, I just want to iterate that point, but also just share how big group is dealing with this and thinking about this. There's, I mean, there's a group chatting about this, over 30 to 40 people. Each one is, you know, part of a family, so that's more people. I've had people sending me messages from Facebook groups talking about this. I've had people telling me they read about in a, in a school chat group. So this is something that city is talking about. I think what is alerting people is that, you know, the city council, the planning board did such a great job over the years protecting the inner parts of the city from massive development. There was this understanding in the city that if we build these tall buildings, we build them on the outskirts. And this is, I think, the first time where there's a plan to build 11 stories, because I heard it's retail plus 10 stories above that, in the other parts of city. So that worries people a lot. And also the sense that there was no transparency. I mean, each one of you sends a newsletter every week, talks to people, and yet no one even mentioned it. And then when we went looking for it, it was kind of hidden with all these type of, in a way that was really hard to find it, even online, without even mentioning the name of the street, just block number, et cetera. So I think people are just, feel unease that such a major change in how the city works, right? Building a massive building that in the middle of the city goes through without any type of public debate, public input. And I join my friends in asking that this be brought again for a vote on, on whether to designate it and that we actually follow the planning board recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Mr. Rubin, that is. Armando Luis, are you? Okay, thank you. Jennifer Lowry?
Hi, Jennifer Lowry. I'm here for the same matter some of my neighbors spoke about. And I won't, you can't hear me. I won't repeat everything everyone said, but I would like to reiterate one key point and make another one. First and foremost, I think we all appreciate the challenges that you have as elected officials in balancing various needs of the community. And certainly in this case, that includes balancing the need to, or the desire to have a strong and successful hospital in the city with the needs of residents and what we want in terms of development. Certainly, it's easy to portray us as a group of people who are concerned about what's happening in our backyard. Certainly, that's true, and I accept that premise. I grew up in Hudson County. I grew up in apartments in Weehawken. I worked very hard to earn the right to own the apartment that I do here in Hoboken, and I do have a vested interest in that property and in my neighborhood. So I am transparent and I'm unapologetic about that. Similar to what my neighbors say, I do also realize the value and the importance of having a hospital in Hoboken. I've used it before. My family's used it for emergency services. My niece was born there. So I appreciate the difficulty. That being said, we heard today so many iterations of the challenges we have with development in Hoboken and how, whether it's developers or other parties that we're doing business with, attempt to come back and renegotiate with us to do things that are not in the best interest of the town. This developer, we didn't have a choice, right? He purchased the property out of bankruptcy. But what I ask all of you is to put in place absolutely every protection that you can for your residents, for your neighbors, and certainly for our community. This is somebody that has a very dubious track record. This is somebody that we've learned in conversations from all of you, has already made commitments that it's backtracking from. So do not agree to terms that allow that person, that that company, that is not really a healthcare company that wants to make money from real estate and development, to take advantage of us. Put protections in place. Don't grant them any opportunity to make money on commercial developments, real estate developments, unless and until there is firmer commitments about what will actually be done at the hospital. Having lived in Hudson County my entire life, this hospital has been in trouble my entire life. And there are root cause problems that haven't been addressed. And there are concerns that this solution doesn't address them either. So let's not put ourselves in a position of creating another hole that actually doesn't fit the problem. The second point I'd like to make, which was touched upon, but I'd like to say a bit more strongly, is I am a, I will say that I voted for Mayabala after Hurricane Sandy because I was very proud of how this town came out of that storm and what was done. What I've seen since he sought higher political office in New Jersey has been absolutely disgusting. The worst of Hudson County politics, the worst of New Jersey politics. And I believe that's at play here as well. We heard some other instances with the last, with one of the developments that require us to have a settlement. I know the power of Brian Stack in this county, and I know the prior, the power of Brian Stack in this state. I can see why he conceded to the political pressure. Again, protect us, not him. And the fact that he has somebody who is now an employee of this developer negotiating with this town and dealing with this, to me, is a brazen conflict of interest that should preclude any further discussions about any path forward with this developer unless and until that's resolved. I work in public affairs. I know what lobbyists do. I know how it benefits a developer, a company, to have somebody who has that close of a relationship. So I agree with everything my neighbors say in terms of their asks, but I would say today's council meeting was enlightening in terms of the power that developers and contractors have had in this town and how it hurts our residents when we don't put proper protections in place. And secondly, the political nature of a lot of these deals and a lot of what's going forward, you can, this has gone on in our state, in our county, in our city forever. And everybody jokes about it. It's not funny. We're all victims. All of your neighbors are victims. You're victims. You have people who live in this city. So let's put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Am I correct? Kyle, I believe it's Patel. Okay. The Stevens Government Group. I don't know that you guys are going to get 20 minutes, by the way.
Don't worry, don't worry. Yeah, yeah. So, good evening, everyone. So last spring, the Stevens student government stood here to reaffirm our commitment to working with the Hoboken community. And today, as the government and community relation chair, I, Sarah Paneras, alongside Michael Michello, our vice president of relations, are proud to continue that promise as we share how we plan to strengthen our involvement. As student government, we are dedicated to promoting and encouraging civic engagement in our students. And our goal is to amplify the voices of Stevens students to develop involved neighbors.
And to really build off of what Sarah said, our connection to Hoboken really extends well beyond campus. According to a 2019 Economic Impact Report, adjusted for inflation, Stevens contributes roughly $177 million to the city economically. And this includes $14 million annually spent by students on Washington Street and small businesses alone. But our impact isn't just measured in dollars and cents. Stevens students have devoted over 64,000 hours of service across Hoboken just last year, supporting schools, shelters, and members of our community. We look forward to building a partnership with our city. And as residents of Hoboken, students hope to be recognized not as temporary visitors, but as our neighbors, as who contribute to the community. Many graduates continue to call Hoboken home, with over 1,200 Stevens alumni residents in the city, and many Stevens students who continue to call Hoboken after they graduate. While the student body changes from year to year, thousands of Stevens students will always be here and a part of the community. And for students, the city council remains one of the most important avenues to be heard. And we thank you for not calling us temporary residents, but as being our neighbors, fellow residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate your volunteerism, which is great. And the relationship between the city has improved since someone as old as I have, you know, backed 25, 30 years ago. So thank you. Enrique Herrera? Do you need their names?
Okay. My, my public portions this time around, again, I do emphasize my belief in public inquiry in terms of technology that's as advanced as it possibly can be. Neuralink technological roofies, real-time communication, ingestible, real-time communications that are faster than walkie-talkies of our police that may, may be something we need to talk about, especially the ones that involve a lack of risk management, any type of advanced technology that can actually advance itself that, that fast should be something to be looked at. And public inquiry is number one. But how do we really go about, how do we really go about charging people with the crime of being a perpetrator of that? To be a roofie victim of a technology, I myself have put myself out there as saying I am a technological roofie survivor of Neuralink, especially the type of ingestible Neuralink that is stuck in your body forever, powered by your bioelectricity, algorithms that incorporate real-time communication, AI airdrops of materials that are unbecoming of anyone's character into your minds to torture you, maybe even pleasure others, who knows? But the legal standpoint of talking about that would lead toward schizophrenia and how that in itself ruins the conversation that I'm wrong. Obviously, there's no such thing as an airdrop of a visual or auditory hallucination into a mind of a human being. That's where I coined a Schrodinger's delusion deliberation, which is the capability of speaking of technology that is of that nature, technology that's indistinguishable from schizophrenia, using my First Amendment of freedom of speech and expression, without the fear of being intaked or put into an inpatient facility in any way, shape, or form. That in itself does give me some sense of leeway in terms of providing a legal standpoint for what if everyone has one of these in their bodies? And this type of technologies in our ingredients and artificial ingredients and stuff like that. And it could just turn on and you just have voices tomorrow, or ideations of any type of intrusive thought, or an AI airdrop of a dream or a nightmare, and that can, it could work that way, just as advanced as it possibly could be. How far could it go? Is where I am, I am entropy. Algorithmic collapse codes is my thing, deep fake preventions, especially when it comes down to any insertion of it into your brain. A collapse code would be a 0101 as opposed to ones and zeros, which would be the, the beginning. A collapse code would be a 0101 as opposed to ones and zeros, which is the beginning of an algorithmic, it'll be the beginning of what would be algorithmic entropy in terms of how far the technology could go. When it comes down to survival, lower-income communities would take into account that a numbered system like a microgrid would incorporate real-time communication into into people who are broke, who would get money for having one of these things in their heads, for being lookouts or enforcement itself to always be there. So my legal standpoint for that, to kind of level the playing field, would be punishment served in the event that you are incorporated with this type of system of illegal activity involving advanced technology, which is unregulated, faster than police, faster than anything, you're just involved with that type of technology. I would incorporate a legality standpoint without verdict, a technicality verdict of punishment served. You survived, then you suffered. Whether you're good, bad, or evil with it, at some point, you were broke, you needed money, that wasn't something that you really wanted, and you suffered so much that like it doesn't matter. To suffer through schizophrenia or any type of ideation in your mind without a headphone or anything, and you have to explain that to people, the judge would have to take that type of punishment served if it was every human being on planet Earth that has these artificial advancements, any type of Neuralink transmitters and stuff like that. Self-preservation is survival, and for someone to really utilize that technology, I can't necessarily disagree with you. That's just something that you have to use, whatever. But for those higher-ups that believe in that type of technology, entropy, in terms of algorithmic entropy, is already in the works. Deep fakes cannot go as far as it possibly could go because I am at the end of that as entropy, as algorithmic collapse itself. It's innocent until proven guilty in real time, so if there is a chance you get caught with a Neuralink in real time, let's say I have one in my body, does that mean I'm guilty automatically? No. Cops on the local and state level monitor their calls. To say the legality argument in terms of a verdict would be innocent until proven guilty in real time, you're not automatically guilty for having a Neuralink in your body, you're just unable to really explain it. It gets the police off your back as they monitor local and state affairs, like when you go through a call and stuff like that. But it will cause minimal risk and casualties to just examine the technology. Again, public inquiry into the technology and how advanced it possibly could go, if it's already as advanced as it possibly could be, if, you know, without risk management, you have people walking around here who are gangsters and stuff. Well, that being said, I hope the police in Hoboken really checks out these Neuralink roofies. I'm also a victim of it. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Chloe Robinson. Nomás Roberto.
Thank you, council members. Let me, I don't know how many of, I see some of them are still here. Let me welcome the people who came for 122 Clinton. I can only say that once your eyes are, can see the corruption and the state of local politics, they'll never be closed again. I am very sorry. You will be suffering for the rest of your life, it seems. I want to echo a couple of things that Patricia Waiters said about people should not be voting when they have had a relationship with the developer. I want to push back on statements that Quintero and Cohen made that's not gonna cost anything. It's not gonna cost us on day one, but on day two, three, four, five, when these people come, it's gonna cost us because they will not pay their proportionate share of taxes, so we will have to pay extra. If that's not correct, please correct me, but I do believe that the conditions are that they won't pay more than 20% taxes for the first five years, and then it scales up. Anyway, the reason I wanted to speak on public portion is none of that. It's a completely different thing. I was at the mayoral debate on last week, and there was a statement made, there were a few statements made about issues, which were back to the e-bikes, and there was a statement made by Councilman Tiffers, Tiffany Fisher, saying, well, since the pandemic, we have to have these services. And I kept on thinking, and maybe this is a crazy idea of mine, you know, we don't. We can change the system. We are, I mean, back, maybe my mind is faulty, but before the pandemic or before this Uber dash, et cetera, people did not go hungry in Hoboken because they couldn't get any food. People either walked to the restaurant or asked for delivery from the very specific restaurants. So I think we should really seriously consider a radical choice. And I'll agree it's radical, because no other city has actually, to my knowledge, done this. Ban all the delivery systems that are, these websites, right? It will have several advantages. From the point of the businesses, they won't have to pay 15 to 30% commissions, which they pay now. People can still get delivery, would still be able to get delivery from restaurants, but they would be deliveries that would be tied to a particular restaurant. So if you order from Chinese, the Chinese has delivery, Pizzeria has delivery, whatever. This will solve the problem of the bike delivery people don't have any place to go to the bathroom since they're tied to a specific establishment, that you can use the bathroom there, they can charge their phone there if they need to do anything else. The basic premise is we're a one-square-mile place. I remember when Councilman Presanzano said people were asking for deliveries for two blocks away. Why do we need that? I mean, why can't we have people walk two blocks anymore, it seems, in the pandemic? It has plenty of advantages. You get fresh air, you exercise, you see the community, you talk to your neighbors, you talk to people on the street. Just think about it. I mean, it's, I know that a number of you maybe have commitments to some of these websites, but I don't think you'll find that if you do it at a city level, that the restaurants will be against it. I think they will be for it because the cost of that to them is high, and even if people go and pick it up, they charge a fee. So I think it's worth considering. If not, at least I voiced my crazy opinion, okay? Thank you very much.
Can I make one correction? I'm sorry, Mr. Vruthali, you brought up a member of the public had mentioned earlier with respect to my name and donations that were received. She was not correct. That is not the case for myself, and I was going to correct her then, but I got sidetracked, but just wanted to make sure to correct the record.
That you had not received the...
Relevant to that project, correct.
Okay. Or any other project?
Developer, and that developer. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to set the record straight.
Still shows that there's a difference between two council people. One recused, one didn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vruthali. Is that close? Vruthali. Andrew Impostato.
Hello, all. It's good to see everybody, everything going on in this country. It truly is nice to see every, every one of you. I was a former Hoboken Housing Authority Commissioner, so I know all of you pretty well. Agree on some things, disagree on some things. One of the roles I have in Hoboken, one of the businesses is a company called Parking Dude. We are a mobile app that we formed in 2016 that informs residents, helps residents park and own their car in Hoboken. We do valet parking in Hoboken. We try to create solutions for problems in Hoboken as it relates to parking. I'm here to speak about the cameras, and I know that you have a new resolution and new business, I believe. But I just wanted to kind of set the record straight. I've talked to several of you about this, but I just wanted to let everyone know how we got to this point and kind of rewind and talk a little historical data as resolutions were passed. Back in May 1st of 2024, Ryan Sharp, Director Ryan Sharp, sat up here right where I am and talked about a program that they wanted to bring to Hoboken, $170,000 contract, that put up cameras all over Hoboken to kind of get data and collect analytics on our parking and different loading zones and how people are double parking in bike lanes. And he tried to convince to you that there were two phases. The first phase was put the cameras up, collect the data, get the analytics, run their algorithms. The second phase was to have the councils take that data and initiate a program so that when trucks are parking in our loading zones, they're charged, and it's like an automatic EZ Pass. It goes automatically to their credit card, and you guys would set the time constraints when it starts to collect money and how much it would be. And several council members responded to that resolution. Councilman Russo was objection about how much they were gonna charge and when it was gonna start. Councilman Russo said, I mean, Councilman Ramos said, absolutely not. I don't want the businesses, I don't want the delivery people accepting that charge. They pay enough already. Councilwoman Fisher loved the idea, thought that it was something, it was a great amenity, as she said. Councilman Doyle corrected everyone and said, listen, we have the opportunity during Phase Two to go back as the wise counsel, that he said, and set those prices. So always have that opportunity to vote that in. And then Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Jabor, and Councilman Quintero loved the idea, as well as Councilman Paul loved the idea. But nowhere in that debate, nowhere in that debate do we talk about using the cameras as enforcement for giving $150 tickets to people that double park in bike lanes. There was never mentioned. Now, it was buried in the resolution, which gave the authorization to the City Council to enforce and use the cameras to give tickets as such. Now, that was, that was back in 2024. We've seen no mention of this. We never got any type of community meetings. We never talked about putting the program in for the loading and unloading zones, the automatic EZ Pass pay. And then Friday, we get a NICSOL alert that says that starting October 1st, these cameras are gonna start enforcing and giving people $150 tickets. So this is what it means. If I'm a dad and I go and I order a pizza from Napoli's, $20, $25, whatever it is now, I pick it up, I double park, because there's no parking anywhere, right? You guys have, you've done nothing to create solutions to open up parking. That $25 pizza is gonna turn into $175 pizza in another month, right? You go to the liquor store, Sparrow on Washington Street, you buy a six-pack, that's gonna be a $180 six-pack in another month. You're gonna ruin businesses, you're gonna ruin the local economy. This is what a smart, efficient government should have done with a program like that. We pay $170,000 to a company. They come in, we clearly have a problem. They get the data, they get the analytics, they present it to everybody. We have local community meetings, right? We talk to our residents, we talk to our business owners. We say, guys, what can we do to fix the problem? The problem is there's no parking. The problem people is, is that they double park, which creates an unsafe environment for bikers. I'm completely for bike safety. I bike all the time on Washington Street. I don't want to get hit by a car, I don't want to have to swerve around a double-parked car, okay? But this doesn't address that problem. Now, what would address the problem? I think you guys should instead push this thing back to March, gather a community meeting with local partner, equity partners, business owners, residents, community experts on parking, right? And let's put in free loading and unloading zone parking spots on Washington Street in our business district. Let's put three, four of them on the street, five-minute, maybe 10-minute max, okay? You can run in, you can get your goods, your services, you can run out. Deliveries can come, they can park, they can go get their meals to deliver. Create those on either side of the street as a pilot program, and now you say, well, how are we gonna enforce it? Use the cameras to enforce it. If you're parked for more than 10 minutes, then you're gonna get a ticket. But you have to put the, you have to, you have to have knowledge, you have to do marketing, and you have to have the ability to get everyone together to try to have solutions. So I'm happy that you guys are putting this on new business. I hope that it passes, and I just wanted to put out there, I wish all the people running for mayor best of luck, okay? I know it's a hard job that all of you do. I knew what I was, how hard it was when I was a commissioner, okay? And you guys clearly have a lot of stuff going on, so I just wanted to thank you for your time and energy.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Impostato. Kevin Davis.
You know, you guys can make me really happy tonight, and I think you know why.
That's what we live for, Kevin.
So I've been going to meeting after meeting after meeting, talking about my concerns about dynamic pricing of residential parking permits. Sometimes super serious, sometimes with bananas, because I think the idea is bananas, and sometimes with other props or references to survey questions that are biased. But there is an ordinance on first reading tonight that I really hope you guys pass eight-nothing, and then you have a second reading, and I hope that passes as well. Maybe eight-nothing is too much to ask for, but that would be great. And what this ordinance does is it bans the city from using dynamic pricing and algorithms to set the residential parking permit rates, whereas the current policy is you have the current parking permit rate for residents, and it's indexed to inflation. And that's what you guys voted on years ago, well, most of you who are on the City Council, and I think that's what should continue. I'm a big biker myself, I look like crap tonight, I smell like it because before the meeting, I worked my part-time job as a bike tour guide in New York City. I have a day job as a bookmaker, and not the Simon and Schuster type, but I also lead bike tours in New York City. I love it. And I think, you know, someone who bikes, making it really expensive for people to park in Hoboken who are Hoboken residents doesn't really help me much. There are some other controversial things that you guys can do that would make things better, but taking the power out of your hands to set parking rates and putting it in unelected officials to set it to whatever they want, and they're gonna go as high as they want because they hate cars. And one of the arguments for dynamic parking, pricing of parking that we heard is if you make parking more expensive, only the people who need it are gonna park, and they're gonna have an easier time finding a parking place. Well, of course, if you charge, if they charge $50 a loaf of bread, nobody's gonna buy bread except for those who really need it for a recipe. So this ordinance, it codifies it, it bans the city from using dynamic pricing of parking, and not only that, if there's a pilot program like there is right now for the bike lane and bus lane cameras, it means that the pilot has to be voted on by the City Council, so the city can't pull a fast one in you guys. I think consensus is very important to build, and I got a story about it. I recently attended a funeral for someone who was close to me. The story of how I met him is I was 23, I ran for office, and they were attacking me for living, my opponents were attacking me for living with my parents, so I needed some serious senior citizens to knock on doors for me, to make the case that I'm a serious person. And I had this one volunteer who was a retired railroad worker, and he couldn't ever determine what his party was. In his lifetime, he was a Democrat three times and a Republican three times. I just think he should have been Democrat all his life, but he can never figure out his political party. But he believed in compromise and working together. And at the funeral, it was at the Shiva, and I met someone, and I asked where they lived. They said Hoboken. I said, where in Hoboken? They said 333 River Street. I said, oh, I'm really good friends with their city councilman, Paul Presanzano. I think he's the best thing since fidget spinners. And, I mean, there's other examples I can use. And she's like, yeah, I think Paul does a really good job, but you know who my favorite city council member is? And I'm not gonna give the answer right away, because you guys can think, oh, is it Mike Russo because he's hot? Is it Tiffany because her politics are similar to Paul's? Is it Rubin because it's politics or some? Nope. Phil Cohen was her favorite city council member, even though his political beliefs are much different than Paul's. So a lot of the people living in Hoboken, they don't want to see you guys like argue all the time, they want to see you guys agree all the time. So what if you guys vote eight-nothing to move this ordinance to second reading? It'd be great. I would love you guys to vote. It'd be great, I would love you guys forever, because then I wouldn't have to bring bananas anymore. Or maybe I would, but first, another issue. But at least you guys did something I want. So please vote yes on this ordinance tonight. And then if it passes eight-zero, or five-three, or whatever, vote yes again.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Haney Ahmed.
Thank you, Council President Doyle. I want to speak on the, the cameras. I sat all night, I listened, listened in many meetings, and this isn't new. This is something that the elected officials, the council, and the administration have been working on for years. You have this constant balance of, you have bike riders that want to ride safely in a bike lane, and you have people like Alex who live on Washington Street and have to figure out, you know, I've got a 40-pound load of laundry, I have a child with me, how do I get them out safely? How do I drop them off in front of the house in the rain, get them in and, and, and live in the city? I know that, I know this, this council in particular works very hard, you know, over the years, and they put a lot of thought. You guys don't do things ad hoc, I've watched you, and this is one of the better councils I've seen in a long time. And it wasn't with malice that this was done with the cameras. But I think we take a step back and say, what is it we're trying to do? Do we want good behavior, or do we want revenue? And if I had to guess, my gut instinct is you guys want good behavior. Good behavior is not leaving your car 20 minutes in a bike lane, and, I don't know, getting a perm or getting your nails done or something, I get it. And I heard speakers come here, and, and this is the frustrating part, I know you guys bite your tongue, that have no empathy. I've seen speakers tonight come here with no empathy and think that the city should run according to their terms, as if they don't know anyone that is handicapped, as if they don't know anybody who has an elderly grandmother that you're going to drop off to a doctor's appointment, or a sick child that maybe is seven or eight-year-old that you can't put in a stroller, but you want to get in and out of a pediatrics place. So I'm not so concerned with the council, because I get it, the empathy, you guys deal with it every day, you get the phone calls and the emails. And we try to think, what are the consequences of doing some of this stuff? And one of the things that I go back to, and I said years back, was, I've always tried to ask for a five or 10-minute meter, because I think that would give good behavior. If you see an open spot, well, it's a red meter, you see it in Westfield, you see it in Summit, you see it in these other towns. And it creates a spot where, hey, I could go there real quick, do what I have to do, get in and get out. That's good behavior. If it's free, maybe people abuse it, you know, I think Andrew stole half my notes, I don't know how he got them, but I agree with a lot of his points. There is, there's got to be a way where cars could come in, park, and keep going. The other thing you don't want to see is, in, in Council Presanzano's first ward, where you have a lot of the bars and a lot of people getting dropped off to the path and going back and forth, is, do you really want Uber drivers circling the block because they're afraid to get a ticket? That's not going to create less traffic, that's more traffic. Now you got a guy or a woman circling, circling, looking for their passenger, and terrified because it could ruin their night if they get a 50 or $150 ticket. We don't want to see that, we don't want the extra traffic. So maybe we need to rethink things, and maybe we need Uber drop-off sections of the city, especially by the path. You know, what's happening, we can't get around it. The next thing that's coming, whether we like it or not, is driverless cars. They're going to be here, and we're going to have to figure that out. You know, we've never seen it before, but we have to figure it out. So I think that if we look at the city and say, you know, what are our issues, what are we trying to solve for? Turnover happens, people come, they have to get things done. I think that we should look at it in a, in a larger picture, and not just look at it from a centrist point of view of like how it affects only, you know, one person that doesn't believe in deliveries. I mean, to say that, I don't, I don't order out, I go get my food, but there are single moms, there are people in town that have just a crazy schedule, and, yeah, they ordered a pizza, they ordered, you know, some other food, Greek food or something, it doesn't make them a bad person, doesn't make them a horrible person because they use a delivery service. And some people go pick it up themselves, that's fair, right? You know, but I apologize to the people that do that to you, that don't come up with solutions, they just come, you know, with a barrage of you, 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 like, it's hard to run for office, we got four of you running, we're lucky to have four people running, and they're going to roll up their sleeves and work their tails off, and, and the public will tell us where the direction's going. But for now, I would just urge you to, let's try to find something that urges good behavior. Let's try to get the good behavior by getting people to park just real quick, get your stuff in and out, and keep it going. And then we could always ramp it up with enforcement later on, if you need more cameras, if you need to do something. The bus thing drives everybody nuts, we, none of us could understand it here, these large buses, they have a huge bus stop, you guys gave them loadings on the land a plane, and they refuse to pull in. They, you know, they kind of half-pull in, block traffic, and they block everybody, they block the bike rider, the car. You know, if you're going to put a camera, let's get the bus drivers at least for a while, so they could write them up and know who the offender is, and help, help them get good behavior too, like, we created the spot, we want you to pull in it. I thank you for your time, I don't want to take more time on this, but again, just, you guys will figure it out, it's not your hardest problem. It's a difficult one, but it's not your hardest, I've seen you figure out more difficult things. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Jeremy Micol.
Wait for the mic.
Someone got up, I'm like, he's not Jeremy.
We're, we're going to be done with, I just got back from New York City, we had a conference today. MongoDB for all your data storage needs, not paid to say that. Hi, Alex Liz, thanks for sticking out, I appreciate you guys still being here. I just took the ferry back from Midtown, I can't wait for those $5 ferry rides, thanks for explaining that, how that works last week. Pat Light, I think you guys should tap him for, I know he did the PRA thing, you should tap him for some marketing for City Hall, his Instagram videos for what's going on in Hudson Place, he's not going to stop till that's Nashville. And I want to see what he does with a hot chicken sandwich. 122 Clinton, I think the resident talked about displacement, so I hadn't heard that mentioned, because there's been online chatter about that, so it was good to hear. You currently live in 122 Clinton? Oh, somebody, just speaking for somebody, okay. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Another thing, I'm not sure it was raised, but I just wanted to mention in case it was not, was, there's a lot of questions about the impact on schools. So anyway, we had a pre-K lottery this year, downtown schools, Connors is kind of at the brim, I know there's going to be more growth in the Southwest, so that definitely should be considered. Dogs in grocery stores, just don't do it, folks. If it's, if it's not a service dog, and there are plenty of not-service dogs in our grocery stores, if you've been to Trader Joe's recently. And I realize this isn't a Board of Ed meeting, back-to-school night this week, sampled Chartwell's food, great stuff there. Anything to help the kids, maybe I went in with low expectations, but I came away impressed, they were given out. Chicken gyro sandwiches and chicken teriyaki, I hope the kids like it. And that they're eating their vegetables, pizza's not a vegetable, tomatoes are a fruit. Subject to water main breaks, I got the pleasure of speaking to Chekki Beckford from NBC, I want to say NBC4, I think she came down from Fort Lee. If you don't get a NICSOL alert, just go outside and listen for the hovering helicopters, that's how we found out about it, we went down the 7th and Madison this week. And something else more pressing, Dominic Sorely, I think he's maybe over in Ward 6 over by Alessio's, has asked numerous times through social media to Viola, and I don't know if anyone in the city, asking about any approved home water testing solutions. So a lot of people wait in limbo until we get a boil water, sorry, advisory lifted. And so he was asking if there's anything that is recommended that we can self-test, and then stop boiling the water ahead of time, maybe. So if there's not any official recommendations, I'll see what my friend Yuri can come up with, and maybe share that back with Dominic and anyone else that's interested. And lastly, I'll close it out, the Amazon hub update, I mentioned last week, we're over by 6th in Clinton, or 6th, so I saw them at 5th and Grand, streets were left cleaner, that's great, they were blocking one crosswalk, but overall, not bad. I think that's going well. Thanks, have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, Chair. What's, did you forget your leaf?
Yes, thank you, sorry. They confiscated this, I'll take it back. Thanks, Chair.
That's a paddle, is a pickleball paddle, right? So this, no more members of this, motion closed?
Second.
Mr. Kurt.
Voice?
Yeah.
Actually, I don't think you came, you didn't come up already.
So he brought a very good point. What's going to happen with the Hoboken Charter School? Hoboken Charter School on 8th, on 7th and Washington, they all double park, dropping off the kids. What's going to happen then? Everybody think they get a ticket? Anybody think about that? No, right? Damn.
Maybe we have.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay, okay.
If you stop for one second, you're not going to get a ticket. You understand that it's not going to be one second?
Jim, I understand, I understand, the fact is, it's the money bank for Hoboken. Sunday parking, cameras, like, it's, becomes Hoboken's piggy bank to the residents and the businesses. You talk about working with the businesses alliance, you're hurting them. You're hurting, people aren't coming into Hoboken, my friends don't want to come to Hoboken to watch Sunday football. They'd rather go to Ashford, Jersey City. So give them their money. You guys might not care about it, but that's money that businesses are losing. I'm really a little more calm right now, because before I was exaggerated, but thinking about, what I really want to say is, you guys are really hurting Hoboken, the residents and the people, and, you know, customers. And all comes from Hoboken parking, that needs to stop. So I urge the next person who runs for mayor and wins, cut the, cut that cord. I'm tired of putting money into Hoboken. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. No more members of the public?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have two resolutions under new business.
We have the ordinance for introduction.
Oh, oh, all right.
All right.
You insist. Jerry, it is the three that go up the side.
Ordinance for introduction of the city of Hoboken County of Hudson State of New Jersey, creating and implementing Chapter 5, 59B entitled Hoboken Trust Act. Mr. Cohen?
Point of order. Point of order.
Does the speaker call the vote? But I'm sorry.
Point of order. I just want to ask a question.
It's not a point of order.
Okay, I want to ask the lawyer something before I vote, that's fair. Yes or no?
It's not a question of fairness, but... Go ahead, just go ahead, please ask, yes.
Brian, in, I have a question that, in this trust act, the Immigration Trust Directive of 2018 by the state, we are governed by that, correct?
Yes.
So...
That applies to the city of Hoboken.
So what is difference from this ordinance from that? I mean, you've had a...
I did not compare that ordinance, this ordinance to that. What I did do is I compared this ordinance to the executive order. What this does is simply codifies the executive order that the mayor passed, I want to say whatever it was, it was his first act, 2018, or whatever it was, 2000...
January of 2017.
Okay, so my question is, I need a legal degree to read this, number one, but my question is, are we adding things in that the state is not doing, or are we putting more stuff in? Because when I looked at this, I have a lot of questions, and before I vote on something, I want to find, I mean, we had a lot of stuff happen this weekend, I got this on Friday. So my question is, what in this directive, because we've changed, we went from a one-page or to a six-pages, we've added a whole bunch of more stuff, and a lot of the stuff is in there that we, that is going to cost the city money. I see some things that now our police officers may have to do, or public safety. I see that we have to do something about checking visas or something on this link, and I'm, I'm like baffled how it's changed from one thing to next. So I'm asking, is there something in here that I'm missing?
I'm, I'm imploring you, number one, you have, we'll have three weeks to digest this before there's a hearing on it. And number two, you know, I would suggest that asking these questions before the meeting, this is not...
Correct, but you saw what we had happen this week. There was no, literally no, I didn't get off the phone today, then I think I saw you and I told you that, today, with problems in the city. This is not the biggest problem for me right now. So I looked at this and read this, and I have a bunch of questions, and I can't sit up here and consciously vote on something when I have massive questions on it.
Well, you can vote, no, that's something...
Well, I'm just asking, the question is, I'm, I asked the question because I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, this is written like a lawyer. So before I vote on something, I can't, honestly, if I don't understand it, how can I vote on it? And if, if I'm the only one that says that, I think I call on everybody else, because there's a lot of stuff in here that's not clear. And we went from an ordinance that was very short, that what the mayor directed, the mayor's director was not this, it was very short. So I'm asking the question...
Right, the point of this first reading is not to discuss, and I don't know that Brian, a lawyer, is a lawyer, but I don't know that he's going to be able to give you a yes or no answer. If you just said, is this effect blank? And he said no or yes, but it's six pages, and he's not going to be able to, I believe, explore and explain all the legal ramifications of this now. And so with three weeks between now and October 8th, I suspect, I hope, that Brian would be able to get you the answers that you were requesting, and I would be happy to help as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
No.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Abstain.
Abstain. Introduction and ordinance amending Chapter 192-4A Parking for Persons with Disabilities to Add and Amend Reserved Parking Spaces.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
Aye.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
Yes.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
Aye.
Ordinance for introduction, amending Chapter 190 entitled Vehicles and Traffic to amend curbside parking regulations adjacent to City Hall.
Mr. Farina? Please call the vote.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
No.
President Zano?
Yes. Aye. Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
No, no.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
What's that? Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
Our resolution fails. Introduction, an ordinance amending Chapter 190 Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of the City of Hoboken to add Article, and let's see who knows...
39.
Mr. Cohen?
No. No.
Sorry. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Jabor?
No.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Quintero?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
That's the end of that, okay. Onto new business.
Okay, so we have two resolutions. The first, which would be a condition precedent for getting to the second one, meaning if it doesn't pass, then we don't vote on the second one.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Fisher?
Is it okay if I speak on the urgency of it?
You are, yes, you certainly are entitled to speak on these, although, did we make it clear that these were not on the consent agenda? Nobody pulled these.
These are, new business is never on the consent agenda.
No, that's not true.
What?
It's new business.
New business is on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't going to make him stick around and wait, but you, you go ahead, you may speak.
So do we think that we already approved these? So we don't.
Well, I.
We did not.
We did not.
I think we did.
I'm with Mike. Mike knows.
Nobody, nobody took them off, so.
New business is not consent. It's a separate header.
It's, it's a resolution.
Doesn't matter if it's a different header.
It is. He created a whole new public comment just to address that, that has a separate header.
The council certainly can police itself, but in my opinion, they were not passed.
I don't think so.
New business is not part of the consent agenda.
All right.
I don't want to.
So, Ms. Fisher.
Then you can talk.
Please, go ahead.
Do what you gotta do.
Yeah, so I think the, I would like to say that it is urgent enough to come on tonight because we don't have a meeting between now and our next meeting, or I'm sorry, between now and October 1st, when this new, this new pilot is gonna start. So, you know, we had talked about it in our parking and transportation subcommittee and, you know, we heard from several residents today that we're hearing about it kind of for the first time a week ago and raised a number of important issues with regards to the impact on our businesses, with regards to the impact on residents that live on Washington Street that really rely on this short-term ability to stop. And so because of that and because we didn't really collect feedback from stakeholders that were directly affected by this, and we raised this, and I raised this in two back-to-back parking and transportation subcommittees, asking for broader stakeholder input, specifically the Hoboken Business Alliance, the Washington Street businesses, residents on Washington Street, and it doesn't sound like that was the case. So I do think it's, you know, her, I think this is a topic that it, that has so many unintended consequences, including, you know, potentially millions of dollars of, of negative impact on our small businesses on Lower Washington Street, that, that we should consider voting on the new business too as a matter of urgency to send a clear message to the administration that we just want them to pause. It doesn't mean that we don't ever want to do this, but that we just expand the dialogue, incorporate and make sure that we're getting input from all of the people that are most directly impacted by this, not just a small subset. So I would ask that everyone tonight on this dais, at least support a vote on this by supporting the urgency of this tonight. Thank you.
Council, council president, I, because I put it up, I'd like to explain. So this impacts my ward big time because I've got most of the, where most of the infractions happen, it's really sixth and down, but as you get past third, it starts to trickle down with double parking and things at that line. I was on the transportation committee last year and I remember in the way this was discussed. And God rest her soul, when I talked to Jen about this, Jen said, let's, let's look at this, let's see what happened, and we're talking about loading zones. Now, when I went back and watched the video, I read all the paperwork, it is very vague that it talks about, I don't see traffic cameras anywhere in there about using that to police. I am not against this. I am willing to look at this to see how we can mold it to make it fit for everybody. However, just putting it on a Nixal on 5:00 PM, that the council wasn't even updated on it. I don't know what's happening inside the transportation committee because there's a lot of stuff happening that I think we all should know, and it goes back to my one point, that I think we should give committee reports up here. However, in here, there are several things. I brought that up in 2014 about the transit buses. I brought in there that what is the process of appealing tickets and that nature? Has an economic study been done? All we've done is just look at some data on sitting there for a couple, three, four minutes, but we didn't hear anything about residents. How many of those people were delivery workers? So if you have, if you have a, if you have four wheels, you're bad. If you have two, you're okay. I have a bunch of questions that I would love to ask the director, but the director's not here. I think that when you're doing something this large, you need to inform the council at least, at least talk to us. And I believe before Director Sharp left, he said to us, there will be a pilot that you guys will know about and we will give you the data back. In fact, when I was removing the city bikes from the front of city hall and putting them to CVS, we were excited about it because we would have two loading zones on both sides. And he said the camera there would give us great detail to figure out what's going on because that's a busy section. Now, Director Sharp's gone, Director Weber's here. I'll say it, I think rules are a little different. Things just happen out of the transportation department that it just comes out of left field. We, I, all I'm asking for is that we engage the community, engage in the community in a survey that was totally biased, in my opinion, that you don't have anybody, we don't talk to any seniors, we didn't talk to anybody that didn't have a computer that could fill this thing out. All I'm asking for is that we delay this because, listen, in the next couple of weeks, it's going to be useless to do anything because we're not going to have any big discussions here going into mayoral race. So I'm asking for that time to look at this. I'm not against it. I said that very clearly and when I voted before in, in 2004, it was that I gave it a blessing. However, I gave it a blessing for loading zones. I didn't give it a blessing for traffic enforcement by cameras on double parked cars. So this, this resolution is pretty clear that it just basically clarifies that, hey, give us some time, let's talk to the businesses, because we have several businesses that came in tonight, and I think it's only two that showed up, but there's more, they speak for more, that they weren't included in this conversation. And I think it's very important, if you're going to do something where a pizza, I hate to use the example, could cost X, that's horrible. I mean, people just won't come and deliver and getting your separate delivery, there's a reason why they don't have their own delivery people anymore, because it's very difficult to have them work for them for each institution. But I think it's pretty clear what we say is that we've got even a problem with the New Jersey Transit buses pulling in and out. I take it every day, they don't pull in. So all we're asking is just take a pause and we move forward to actually help the businesses. We, I don't need to see more empty storefronts, right? I know some are, our corporate leases ending, I know that there are some that are, are being refurbished. However, our mom and pops are getting hurt on that, we're getting corporate landlords who can afford it. The people that are quote unquote potentially double parking are delivery people. And then my biggest concern is families. How do they get their groceries in the house if there's no parking, if there's no loading zone situation that's set up? And then on top of this, then we get rid of all parklets on Washington Street. That's the next thing that's coming because that's taking up parking spaces. So that's creating double parking. So, I mean, there's like a whole iteration that we keep going through, but we just get this jammed down our throats on a Friday at 5:00 PM and I would expect that the administration would at least bring us into the conversation because we can give valuable feedback and not, oh, you, you know, combative, literally work together to say, hey, let's pilot this on one area of Washington Street and let's see what happens. But coming out and saying October 1st, and then we're just going to go for it, you know, on the way of administration, on the way out the door, I struggle with this. So hear me through on this, that all we're asking for is that we take some time to implement this, but do it the right way and making sure that all the businesses are included, all the residents on Washington Street, because you can't get people's attention in one week in, from Friday's announcement to Wednesday. You can't do it.
Council president.
I'm done.
Thank you, council president. I appreciate all the comments by both of you. However, this has been voted on and passed. It's that clear. Consent agenda defined, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine business by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. We made that motion, we passed that motion, this has been unanimously passed by the city council.
No, it hasn't.
Disagree.
I don't care what you disagree with, it's clearly written on our agenda, it's clearly defined in our rules and regulations, and it's clearly defined in Robert's rules. It's been voted on and it's been passed. Council president knows it, I know it, and I'm sure as soon as Corporation Counsel looks at that and reads it, he's going to know it as well.
Well, Mr. Lawyer, you're in the hot seat.
So, the hot seat, in my opinion, it has not been passed because it says consent agenda. And then it says consent agenda defined and talks about the asterisks. The new business is, although there are asterisks, I want to say that that's a clerical mistake, it is under new business.
Clerical mistake.
We'd have to talk to the clerk on why they put asterisks on, on there, but I can see why, I can see the confusion.
Yeah, and with all due respect, whether we talk to the clerk or we don't talk to the clerk, they've been clearly defined on the consent agenda, we voted on the consent agenda, it has passed unanimously. Now, anyone in the dissenting vote can, can ask for, ask for a motion for a reconsideration, and I have no problem with that. But the reality is, there is no one in the dissenting vote. It is passed, it is over. Thank you, good night.
Councilman, if I may point, make a different point.
By all means.
A resolution to establish a moratorium, does, do we have the authority to pass a resolution that this should be an ordinance? This should not be a resolution, so if it's ineffective.
Council president, but by all means, I understand that point and I have no problem Corporation Counsel exploring that and coming back and letting us know if that's the case. But as far as the procedural motion and vote, it's done. We, we could always come back next meeting and ask the question, is it legal? Does it hold any weight? That's a different, that's a different question. My only point is that it was voted on, on consent and it was passed.
So if it's an invalid resolution and it makes, it's, it's immaterial.
Correct.
If that were the case.
If that's the case, correct.
But I don't.
But as far as tonight is concerned, this has been voted on and passed.
You are not Corporation Counsel.
You are not a lawyer.
You are one of nine counsel, eight counsel people. Our Corporation Counsel has rendered an opinion that we did not have a vote on this.
Councilman, by all means, it's not up to you, it's not up to me, it's actually up to that gentleman sitting right there.
I agree with you.
It's up to the council president.
I agree with that.
He could, he could make whatever decision he wants. I'm just pointing out the fact that it was voted on and it was passed. That's it.
In your opinion?
In my opinion.
Okay, so I think we should call a vote if it turns out.
I want to talk.
Well, I don't mean, okay, I mean, go ahead, Councilman Russo, or Ramos, I didn't mean to say that we're calling the vote this instant.
No, 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 whenever you guys, does anyone else wants to go or?
All right. Go ahead.
No, so I did not support the program for the beginning. However, the cities that have incorporated the program and they point, when they pointed to their successes, whatever they call the successes, but Hoboken is much different than those cities and we have to acknowledge that fact. Hoboken isn't Fort Lee, Hoboken isn't downtown Pittsburgh, Hoboken isn't Miami, Hoboken actually has people that live in their downtown area, downtown area, our downtown area operates a lot differently. But their successes pointed to two things, two things that they needed to have for it to be successful. Number one was education and number two was signage. One, education, two was signage, and that's how you got the public buy-in to then get the program to run properly. We failed miserably at both. There was zero education and zero signage. So a program that you may be in favor in is going to fail miserably because the due diligence wasn't done to make it operate properly, period. If there was education, I don't, I don't know anything about it, no one knows anything about it. People live on Washington Street, have businesses on Washington Street, they didn't hear about it. I don't see any signage saying, like, leading up to it right now, not propping up September 30th. So you're, you're setting a program that you may want to see successful up to fail from the beginning because people are just going to view it. When that wasn't happening in those cities where it did fail, it did have questions, members of the public just viewed it as a money grab and not as a purpose to create parking or create safety measures. And that's, a program you're looking for is going to fail because of those measures.
I would add, or Councilman Cohen?
Yeah, so this is what we learned from phase one, which, when we have, we talk about having a vote, we all voted for that. There was no confusion about that. And we not only voted for phase one, but we voted for phase two. That was in the vote in 2024. I don't, Mr. Apostato said it was hidden. It wasn't hidden. I mean, it was in the ordinance at the completion of phase one, phase two was authorized by this council in, in the ordinance that we all voted on first and second reading.
May of 2024.
May of 2024. So that we consciously did and there is no question about that. What did we learn in phase one? We learned that only 5% of the violators were people who had residential permits, only 5%. Less than 1% of the vehicles made up 24% of the violations. One vehicle committed 1,268 violations. What are the recommendations for the city in phase two? To ensure that only, that each vehicle only gets one citation for the first month. The suggestion that every time somebody stops their car, they're going to get a ticket, they're going to get racking up a ton of tickets, is not consistent with what the city has announced with respect to this phase two. One ticket a month. You get your first ticket, you realize, oh, this isn't going to work for me anymore. Number two, in other programs, 87% of the vehicles only got one ticket, because when you get that first ticket, you learn. You don't want to get that ticket again. If you park, excuse me, councilman, excuse, councilman, councilman, please. If you park on a corner in Hoboken and you get a ticket and you thought you were going to get away with it and you get a ticket, you realize that is not a corner you're going to park on again. People learn from experience. If you've been parking in bus stops for years, okay, all the customers on Washington Street, when they get off on the bus and they go to the store with their bags to get whatever they're going to buy, whether they're going to buy their liquor at Sparrow or they're going to get their hardware at Ace, when they get off that bus, they can't get off in the bus stop because there's cars waiting in standing. We've seen it, okay? This is what's happening every day on Washington. Go to a bus stop and you can count the cars that are parked in it. You get that first ticket, that delivery guy's going to know, this is not going to be a profitable day for me. This is not my business model. I can't use parking, I can't use bus stops as parking spots, not anymore, not anymore. We've argued to have a protected bike lane on Washington Street, some of the business owners, you know, railed against that then. Okay, we don't have a protected bike lane, we have double parking in the bike lane. That was the consequence of that decision. Can't have it both ways. Furthermore, if you're going to have people, the buses actually parking in the bus stops and dropping people off instead of stopping in the middle of Washington Street, you're going to have better traffic flow, you're going to have more customers coming and going. You're, things are going to, it's going to be easier to get from one side of town to the other instead of having to wait for buses to unload in the middle of the, of the travel lane of Washington Street, which is happening all the time. I was on a bus just this week when I was coming back from the city over at 10th and Washington. I was on 10th and Washington, Alex, true story. Okay, and, and when I, and when I went.
Shh, please, Alex, please. Alex, Alex, please. Mr. Councilman Cohen, please.
Thank you. I went to board a bus to go uptown, there was a car parked right in the bus stop and I tapped on the window as I went to board the bus, the guy rolled down the window and started cursing at me. And I said, excuse me, this is a bus stop, you cannot park here. And the bus driver opened the door to the bus and leaned to the, to the driver of the car that's sitting in the parking spot and started talking to the driver, and the driver didn't budge. You know, we pulled away, the guy was sitting in the bus stop as we left down Washington Street. This happens every day, okay? This is, this is phase two, it's authorized by the city council. I agree with council president that even this resolution, if it was passed, which I, which I'm against, would be ineffective, would be ineffective. Thank you, council president.
President, I have a question. We passed a resolution, not an ordinance, so does that make any difference back in 2020? We authorize.
That was a resolution for a contract with a.
Correct, but that's where they're getting, saying that we voted for this. That's where I don't understand. If we voted for a contract, that's not giving the permission to.
Well, the contract said, set up a, or do a phase one, do a phase two, so.
I, I. You voted for that. The phase two, we're, phase two is authorized, this is part of the execution, which the mayor and the administration is doing.
Has the authority to do.
Right, has the authority to do. Through that contract, through the performance of the contract, that was it. So that's, that's going on. So if we wanted to talk about what we voted on, we voted on this in May 1st, 2024, and it was in there, it says phase one, data collection, phase two enforcement, period. I also agree that this has no effect because we can't cancel, cancel a contract by resolution. It certainly urged somebody to do something. It should be an ordinance.
True.
And then also, you know, we get so pedantic up here with, with process, you know, I, I would question whether I should have even gone past NB1 because, and that's the resolution authorizing that this is an urgent item. Nowhere in that resolution do I see any of the reasons why this is an urgent item.
It's not in there.
So that fails there.
I would question whether I should have even gone past NB1, because, and that's the resolution authorizing that this is an urgent item. Nowhere in that resolution do I see any of the reasons why this is an urgent item.
It's not in there.
So, that fails there. So if I wanted to say, hey, I got this shoved down my throat this afternoon, I look at NB1, I don't even know what the emergency is based on NB1, so I can't vote yes on this. But besides the point, the subsequent points Councilman Cohen made, I agree with. You know, ultimately, we pass all these laws, double parking laws, don't park, you know, in, in, in bus stop laws. And then, for, again, two years, three years, four years, everybody, all the CAPS meetings, people in this room, why don't we enforce our laws? We're gonna, and then we start to enforce our laws, and they say, why are you enforcing our laws? So which one is it, guys?
Council President?
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I apologize. Pregnant pause for dramatic effect.
I got it. Dump for you.
Dramatic effect. Hey, that was my soapbox. So let's enforce our laws. As Councilman Doyle pointed out, if you stop for one second, you're not gonna get a ticket. There's, there's a warning mechanisms that they're building in. This is to, to initially encourage the right behavior.
Right.
There are different timing mechanisms as well, that, you know, we can build in grace periods, and all indications are there will be grace periods put in. But where these have gone in, and they might be uniquely different than, than Hoboken, businesses generally have, have liked it. It has increased turnover, increased uses of, of loading zones, and yes, I agree, maybe we should add some more loading zones to facilitate this and make this a little bit smoother. Traffic will flow better on Washington Street. Is it gonna be perfect off that? No, it's not. Do I understand the concerns? Absolutely. You know, so again, there's a lot of reasons why, I don't think this is an emergency. I think we, this is, this is already something that we've approved to move forward with. I understand why folks are, are anxious about it. And it's, and this is the pilot, right? So if this goes and it's terrible, then this won't be renewed, and the council will have to authorize another contract to make it permanent. So this is a pilot, this is not a permanent thing.
Councilman Russo for the third time?
No, it's only second, but I appreciate it.
Well, you saved one in the back.
Two point, two, two points I wanna make, and again, I understand everybody's point here, but from a procedural perspective, one, you absolutely can cancel a contract by resolution, because that's how you actually enact the contract. That's number one. Number two, that actually brings up a good point, because awarding a contract and allowing for, or, or speaking to a second phase that would include enforcement, does not give the city the authority to enforce by certain means. We would still have to do that by ordinance. That is a law, to, to use an enforcement method in the city of Hoboken would have to be a law enacted by the city of Hoboken. This is where, this is where the state ran into problems, right? When it started to enforce red light cameras. I think, and again, proceed how you need to, but I think it poses the question of understanding how we actually can enact this without an ordinance on the books, allowing for certain modes of enforcement.
Well, modes is interesting that you focus on that, because there is a law in the book that says thou shalt not double park. You, we could all get a ticket now.
Correct.
For that offense.
Yes, as, as people see it, they could issue that.
Whether we can rely on a camera, or whether we rely on a human being.
Correct.
That's the mode that you're talking about.
Yes. I don't, I don't think we can just do that without that law being placed on our books as municipality. And again, that's just my, my contention right now. I would ask Corporation Counsel to look into that. I think he would find that there might be some, some problems with it. Just my two cents, I would just caution everybody.
I, I believe that, you know, I know Councilman President Zano worries a lot about lawsuits. I think I would not disagree with you, but I am not by any means a municipal, I, I believe, yes, we could cancel a contract by resolution, but if we breach the contract that has been signed by the city, then we will have to pay something for the consequences of.
The breach.
The breach. So, but that's, that's different. If, I think procedurally, which I'm, I, I regret being so honest when I'm thinking things, you jumped all over it. The, the fact of the matter is, and I would ask you two, who have much more, a long, a longer tenure here, have in any, have you ever heard us pull something that was in new business at, at the time of calling the consent items? And.
Yes.
Never, ever have I heard you saying, we're, we're pulling this, and we're pulling the things in new business. The reason they're tacked on at the end in new business is because they were not publicly noticed. We have the ability to do that, but the assumption, it has to be very clear in my mind, that the assumption is the new business stuff is.
Councilman, we.
Is dated separately.
I, I appreciate your position on that, however, that's not the case. The case is that we clarified consent agenda. As a matter of fact, we clarified it when I became the council president, to also include, to also include our claims, our payroll, all those things were considered consent agenda. So, we have precedent both ways, that I don't know if you could rely on one or the other, or both, but there has been instances where they were pulled specifically, and, and I understand some council people that have only been here for, for a certain number of years don't agree with that, because maybe it didn't happen in their tenure. I, I get that. But if you're looking at precedent in its history, or at least in its recent history, it has happened both ways. So again, you make, Council President, you make that call. I know, I know there are council people chirping in your ears right now. I'm just pointing it out. I'm just pointing it out.
That's all.
I'm sorry?
You've only spoken four different times. But in fact, I don't recall this ever being the case, that we've ever considered this part of consent, and so I'm encouraging Council President, please call the vote.
So, my, my question to Corporation Counsel is, and I'm thinking, let's call the vote.
Please call the vote.
And we will have the vote.
By all means.
And if, if there's either a lawsuit or an opinion that we are wrong for having called the vote, the vote will be invalidated, and we will at least be past this.
I have no problem with that, Council President.
So, if Mr. Farina or Mr. Lor would, on the first resolution, I think, we, and I, as we've discussed this, I see no urgency. The pilot is, is what this would be. It would start, and we'd get to see what it is. So anyway, that's why I don't feel there's urgency. But, Mr. Farina?
New business one.
Do you, do you have an opinion on this?
Uh.
No, I'm kidding.
Number one, or two together?
No.
Number one first.
All right. Mr. Cohen?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Yvonne?
Nope.
He didn't hear you.
President Zano?
Aye.
Mr. Cattaro?
No.
Mr. Ramos?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
President Doyle?
No.
That's the end of that one.
Motion to close.
Second.
Council President?
I called it.
I called it. I seconded it. Yep, we're done.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it.
It's, it's okay when other council people get called with their pants down, but it's not okay when certain council people get called with their pants down.